Good evening. It is six thirty P M. And I call this meeting to order. Please stand and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council. Tonight, I have one proclamation regarding the agreement between our sister city of Masato and the city of Winona. Whereas the sister city agreement between the city of Winona and the city of Masato, Japan was signed on September twenty ninth, two thousand and one. And whereas Joseph Lepley was the Winona School Contact and volunteer for the program for more than fifteen years. And whereas Joseph Lepley has introduced and led more than eight hundred Winona students and adult chaperones to Japan and introduced their unique culture and travel to Winona's youth. And whereas Joe has tirelessly given his times, talents and resources to make sure the program continues and that every student regardless of situation had an opportunity to travel and experience to travel to and experience Masato, Japan. And whereas Joe spearheaded and led the Winona fundraiser effort to support Masato after the earthquake of two thousand and twelve. And whereas because Joe makes everyone feel appreciated and important and is always physically and mentally present. Joe has earned the respect and love of all those that have worked with him in both cities over the last twenty years. And whereas Winona State Representative Jean Palowski relayed the support from the Minnesota House of Representatives for Joe Lepley Day to be proclaimed in Winona. Now, therefore, I Mayor Scott Sherman hereby proclaim July fifth, two thousand and twenty-two as Joe Lepley Day in the city of Winona, Minnesota, in recognition for Joe's dedication and commitment to the Masato Sister City Program. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Winona to be affixed this twenty-eighth day of June, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll now move on to City Manager Chad Ubel.
Mayor and council, no comments tonight.
Very good. I will now ask the city clerk to take the roll call.
Mayor Scott Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Muller.
Here.
Alexander. Idan.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item two point one is the one thousand two hundred Stores Pond Road Comprehensive Plan Amendment Request for Limited Industrial to Semi-Public Institutional Educational.
For each public hearing, staff will make a short presentation. Then I will ask if anyone from the public wishes to speak to the matter. Each person needs to clearly state your name and address, and you will be given up to three minutes to make your testimony. I will call three times for public comments. Once the hearing is closed, the public may not participate in any discussion by the city council. Tonight, we have City Planner Carlos Espinoza to present.
Evening, Mayor and Council. For this agenda item, the request is to change the land use designation for twelve hundred Stores Pond Road from limited industrial to semi-public institutional and education. The existing properties that you see on the screen here are currently designated with that industrial designation. And the proposal from the Minnesota State College Southeast is to utilize the Tandinsky Center, which is the building in the picture for a new school use. So it actually would be the home for the new Riverway Community Charter School. To change to that school use, a change in the designation for land use of the property is required. And if approved, rezoning would also come before council as well at a subsequent meeting. On June thirteenth, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve the re-designation with the findings that you see on the front page of your packet. In consideration of this matter tonight, there are three options available to council. The first would be to approve the request and a motion to adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and introduce the resolution that's in your packet would be in order under that option. A super majority of five votes is required to approve the change in designation. You could also deny the request or table the item if more information is needed. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I will now open the public hearing regarding the twelve hundred Stores Pond Road Comprehensive Plan Amendment Request Limited Industrial to Semi-Public Institutional Education. The public hearing is now open.
Hi, this is Amy Schmidt. I am representing Minnesota State College Southeast and the Foundation. And I'm just here if there's any additional questions, but I am looking for the city council to support this motion.
Very good. Thank you. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Hi, my name is Amber Beisman, and I live at six oh seven East Broadway. I would like to support this change in designation. Education and public land is what we need to build our community. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Is anybody else from the public which should speak on this matter?
Hi, I'm Bruno Borsari. I live at two sixty Liberty Street here in Winona. And I would strongly support this idea because it's beautifully in tune with the efforts that the city of Winona is trying to make a greener community, a more sustainable community, a community where environmental education from pre-K to graduate school may count and may become transformative for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak regarding the twelve hundred Stores Pond Road Comprehensive Plan Amendment Request? Does anybody else wish to speak on the matter? Hearing none, we will close this portion of the public hearing.
Mayor, I would so by here hereby approve the requested amendment to the two thousand and seven Comprehensive Plan to designate the real property described in Exhibit A as the semi-public institution education and concur with the Planning Commission's decision.
I'll second that, Mayor. Okay, we have a motion from George, a second from Steve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item two point two is the public input on the community center public safety building project.
I would like to ask the city manager to provide introductory remarks before we open the public hearing.
So Mayor and Council, several of you, and I think certainly some of the feedback we received have asked sort of this general question of how did we get here? And so I just want to take us back. I know we've had several presentations regarding this project, but just wanted to make a few opening comments. Hopefully that'll clear up some questions that you may have, if you certainly have more than certainly asked before the public hearing begins. Obviously, I think it's safe to say that staff and councils over the years have talked extensively about building upgrades needed for fire, police and recreation. And I think we've talked about those for at least five years, if not decades. Staff discussed this within their presentations on May sixteenth. And fire and recreation specifically, certainly not to exclude the police department, have had building upgrades in the C I P or within planning studies that date back fifteen plus years. The short history is the Recreation Department studied in great detail the move of the Friendship Center out of the Masonic Temple and into a community center with the Recreation Center. This move was not only studied for the purpose of a combined community center, but also to reinvigorate and solidify funds that were spent on the Masonic Temple as a multipurpose arts venue in downtown. It was much, it was as much about the downtown initiative as it was the community center. Starting in two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and nineteen, many ideas were considered for a new home for the Friendship Center. The community asked us to explore the Y M C A, the old Central School. And during that time, several private properties came forward and made proposals for their properties as well. None of those options panned out for various reasons. Some were location, access, governance, and of course finances. From two thousand and nineteen through part of two thousand and twenty-one, I S G, our community center consultant presented numerous concepts for the community center at the East Recreation Center location up up into construction drawings for that space. In June of two thousand and twenty-one, city staff presented a proposal from B K V Group to explore a combined public safety building. After discussions over the new county jail concluded that there would be no new space for the police department as well as the rising costs of rent. The council then voted unanimously to study a combined public safety building, which would at the initial phase, collect data on response times for fire to determine the best possible locations. The B K V study was presented to council in early two thousand and twenty-two. That study determined that one of the best locations related to response time for fire was the East Recreation Center location. After the location was presented to the council, the city council asked B K V to go back and provide blocking of the East Recreation Center location to include a community center and combined public safety building. B K V presented their blocking on May second of two thousand and twenty-two. And it was determined that the city could construct a new community center at the Saint Stan's School location if it was to acquire the property. The total property to be acquired is still in question and would need to be negotiated. The goal to acquire more property at Saint Stan's location is to allow for additional green space for the new proposed community center. The combined public safety building would then sit at the current East Recreation Center block. The current East Recreation Center and Saint Stan's School would be razed and again rebuilt. So we cannot stress that point enough. The two, the proposed new two gym expanded community center would be rebuilt at an estimated eleven million dollars across the street from the current location and remain a drop-in community center with programming for youth, adults and older adults. The combined public safety building is not physically connected to the proposed community center. However, under this plan, police and fire departments are physically connected as one combined facility. It is that combined concept that we feel would allow us to ask for state bonding funds and not a standalone, local taxed, public safety project or projects. As we've mentioned before, we obviously would mention the strong attributes of the new community center and how that impact would help our overall ask with the state of Minnesota bonding. I mentioned state funding because it remains one of the unknowns. The ability to receive state funding, the state's willingness to bond in general, the city's appetite for local bonding, and of course, Saint Stan's willingness to sell property all remain unknowns at this time. So we're here tonight, as the mayor here will mention in a moment, to listen to public input on this proposed project. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Council, do you have any questions? At this time? Very good. All interested persons may attend the meeting to speak on this proposal. Guidelines for public hearings are as follows. Each speaker must clearly state their name and address for the record. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Monica will have a small reminder available for you. Thirty seconds and time. Each speaker must stay on topic presented in the hearing. If other speakers have already stated your specific point, you are asked not to state the same point. You may state that you concur with that speaker. The audience is asked to not applaud or shout during the public hearing. This behavior may result in the person or persons being called out of order. At this time, I will now open the public hearing regarding public input on the community center public safety building project. Would anybody from the audience care to speak on the matter?
Hi there. My name is Tova Strange. I live at seventeen thirty-nine West Fifth Street here in Winona. I grew up here, and even when I was young, the rec was still the only free place for kids to go inside to spend time with friends. I currently work as a direct support professional for kids and adults with disabilities. The rec is the only free spot that I can take my, the individuals I serve when it's too hot outside or too cold outside, or when they want to play games and make, spend time with peers. The rec is a spot that is safe for children to be themselves without judgment. It offers activities to do and opportunities to build friendships. The rec is a priceless resource. The majority of the children that utilize the rec are black, brown, come from low income homes or have different diagnoses. Children from these populations are more likely to have already witnessed or experienced police harassment and violence. Adding a police presence near this very precious and necessary resource is as oppressive as it is vile. If your plan were to happen, the rec would no longer be seen as a safe space for these kids. And I can guarantee you, you will see less and less use of the space. In fact, I sat down and asked local kids what they thought about this because it's not the job of eleven, twelve and thirteen year olds to come to a city council meeting and beg you guys to stop. These were their comments. It's trash. What they call crime in Winona is what people need help for. Parents won't feel comfortable picking their kids up. What kids want to play with police, it's uncomfortable. If kids are doing drugs, give them something they like instead. That's not it. Ask us. Listen to kids. Now, the last one kills me because the inability or frankly unwillingness to listen is a pattern I've sadly had to come very to terms with with local government in this community. In two thousand and twenty, I, along with other Black and Brown WOMP alumni, fought very hard to get cops out of schools. We spoke of the harassment and abuse suffered by children at the hands of a so-called school resource officer. But now you want to put them next to our rec centers. If you feel that bitter taste in your mouth right now, that's the same bitter taste of disappointment I'm spoon fed by you all. A city who doesn't allow public comment and city council members who don't even answer their emails. The same taste of disappointment you spoon fed children in this community when you said that you were going to destroy their rec center and their playground and their basketball courts so that police could have a more comfortable break room for lunch. Please get rid of that taste in your mouth. Listen to the kids, current and former, that have had to grow up in a town that has repeatedly prioritized police over their own well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the matter?
Hi, my name is Willie Williams. Uh, address five eleven East Fishine and Vine. I personally think that the rec is where me, my little brother and my sister can grow up. We've already been around the rec for so long. And I personally think that taking a, destroying the rec is destroying an orphanage.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak to this matter? Again, there will be no clapping during the public hearing, please. We can wait till the end. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Glenn Eddie Carlson. I will not be sharing my mailing address as I am homeless. But I do have a mailing address in Winona. I've lived in Winona since I was born in Goodview. And I'd like to say that you, Mayor and Council, act as though all we can do is come here and share our opinion. I disagree on this matter specifically. In reality, we are here to share the fact that if you move forward with this plan, there will be even more public resentment towards law enforcement. I cannot understate this. As it is, we don't like our police. We don't trust them. And we don't want them near our kids. Now, in order to fix this, I would recommend we get some new police officers. I would recommend we get rid of some of the old ones. But that's not what we're here to talk about. What we're here to talk about is public safety. We're here to talk about where the fire stations should go so that they get good response times. If you look at my public comment written on online before all of this, you'll see that I expressed that you should just find somewhere else. That you should fund this how it should be funded, not with some money that you get because you put two spaces together. It doesn't make any sense. Nobody here thinks it does. And that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you. Is anybody else which should speak to the matter?
Hi, my name, hi, my name is Nicholas Bushit. Same address, Willie Williams. Going down the red. If you can, we're safety.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Linda Wilford. I live at two eighteen West Broadway, apartment two zero eight. That's the historical junior high. Tonight, we have heard some about the east side rec. And I agree with the police to provide for all who use the E R C. They should have an indoor space and they should have green space. As a member of the Winona Friendship Center, my message to you is so should we. My message is that my age group, older adults, is alive and we have needs. I think my age group is considered dispensable, invisible, not valuable members of Winona. And I am here to stand before you and say, we are valuable. We are alive and we are assets to this community. Many of the events the city advertises to attract tourism is made possible by older adult volunteers. All of this service is priceless. We are certainly valuable. Do not judge us based on the color of our hair or the lifelines on our face or how we walk. Do not judge us based on if we make a paycheck paycheck now. Remember that we have worked. We have experience, expertise and an understanding of life that takes decades to mature. Winona needs a community center. The youth and older adults deserve it. When my friends talk about being active in an improved site with beloved indoor space and outdoor green areas, very often they sigh and say, well, it won't happen in my lifetime. What a harsh judgment for decades to have made about older adults being considered as one of the unimportant groups. A community center could be a jewel in this city, a lively place to meet, socialize, learn, play. We are alive. We are assets to this community. Don't waste another twenty years. You be the ones, you make this community center happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Johnson. I live at seven nineteen Main Street in Winona. I disagree with some of my friends and neighbors on this issue. I do not understand why we would further a narrative that the police and kids are inevitably adversaries. I worked in the court system, including the juvenile justice system for over twenty years. And I routinely saw that a law enforcement officer can be a kid's best friend. Officers are often protectors of children and advocates for them, excuse me. Furthermore, in this distressing age, should we experience some kind of catastrophic emergency? Would it not be better to have law enforcement nearby to react to emergencies? If there is a need for some reason to separate official functions of fire and police from that of kids where kids play, that much can be accomplished by design with entrances on opposing sides. I live in a house on a fifty-foot lot, and I don't see my neighbors nearly as much as I would like because of the way our houses are oriented. All stakeholders that presented at the recent council meeting made compelling cases. Protecting the public with law enforcement and fire protection are core responsibilities of our city. The city has also supported our kids and our senior citizens, and our city wants to continue to do so. I understand that it's way cheaper to have these facilities combined or adjacent to each other than to build several new facilities on different locations. The city has studied this, and we simply do not have many locations for them in our center city. I do support the city's proposal. I think it's simply the best option that we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Claire Richards. I live at twelve fifty-seven West Lake Boulevard. Margaret Shaw Johnson is someone I have the utmost respect for, but I would like to disagree with some of the things that she just brought to your attention. As someone who worked as a case manager in this community for people living with intellectual disabilities, cognitive delays, emotional behavioral disorders. As somebody who is a foster parent in this community, as well as providing respite, something this community desperately needs. And someone who is currently working as a therapist in this community, I would like to speak to the trauma that our children continue to just have to be resilient towards. It's not normal that children should have to acclimate to the idea of school shooting drills. That's not normal. It's not normal that for two years, children's emotional, developmental and educational lives were halted and impacted by a pandemic. Are you seriously considering taking away another space that is meant for them? Children have sacrificed a lot for adults to be comfortable. And if understanding this idea through the lens of a capital budget is how you're comfortable understanding it, then ask yourself, where is the money for the programming that needs to go into these buildings that you seem to have money for? Yes, I understand grants have to be won. Yes, I understand that committees have to be orchestrated. But ask yourself, where is the money for that programming? You're looking at a bunch of people. There's about seventy-five more people in the hall, so I hope you all have snacks. You are looking at people who are able to have the privilege to come out tonight and speak, but a lot of people that need the rec have parents that are working two and three jobs who couldn't be here right now. So ask yourselves if you are comfortable with convenience in funding being the determining factor on how you're making decisions. And I want to come back to that idea of trauma. Margaret Shaw Johnson said that yes, sometimes law enforcement is a really great resource for children. And wow, what a sad narrative that is, huh? Who wants a child to have a best friend with a cop? Right? Let's be better. Let's learn from the mistakes that we are watching other communities continue to make. Where people are protesting and shouting and screaming, let's learn because we can do something different. You have to be the people who decide that. Sorry, we're going to bed now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Katie Subra, and I'm coming to speak tonight in opposition to the proposal. I was here at another forum. Um, I was here at another forum where the developers presented.
Can I get your address, please?
Sorry, yes, uh, two seven five one zero Ridge Hill Drive.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, and. I saw many flaws in that proposal that have not yet been addressed. Including um why the public was not invited to forum. Prior to moving ahead with the developmental process. Um, and I don't see any addressment of green space. Of other facilities that could be added to enhance the rec services rather than limiting what they are. Further than what they currently are. For example, uh, kitchen facilities or other um. Staffing issues to keep the rec center open. For more hours. Um, so I I would not support this proposal without addressing. Some of those additions that could help. The community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is Dylan Troyer. I live at forty eight thirty five West Fifth Street, Goodview, Minnesota, apartment number one. Um, I want to speak quickly to this idea that the um. This would increase or improve response times as if that really even mattered. Statistically, cops are terrible at their job. They're bad at solving cases. Like, you want to look at murder statistics. And other heinous crimes, they don't solve them very frequently. And when they do respond to something bad happening. They either respond late or they get the wrong person or somebody in a family dies in an awful altercation. Unfortunately, that could be him. I don't want. Any extra police around kids. Because unfortunately. This country has proven that they cannot be trusted to give a measured response to a mental health crisis or just simply children acting up. It's terrifying. As a parent. It's horrifying to think of what could happen. If we. Leave more police around in low income neighborhoods where statistically kids are more likely to. Do things that they shouldn't because. Oftentimes crimes are committed out of necessity and sometimes teenagers just are. And that's okay. They should have the freedom and the space to be. I know I spent time at the rec as a teenager and I don't know where I would have been. I hung out at the skate park. It was a beautiful asset for me, a safe place for me and my friends to be and to just loiter and not cause problems for the community. And you know where I would not be? Is an alternative center right next to a police station where I could get arrested. For just hanging out and maybe doing something a little stupid that hurt nobody. So kids just will not be there. It would be an empty facility that you have invested all this money into that no one would be at. Simple as that. So. This proposal would. Just endanger children. And it would just waste our money. I don't pay taxes to just waste our money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gloria. I live in fifty five uh, Lynx Lane, Winona. I'm a mom. I'm a beautiful and smart autistic seven year old, a friend, a neighbor, and a community member. I've been serving the educational field in Minnesota for over twelve years, eight of them here at the Winona Winona Public School District as a Spanish interpreter. For English language learners and holding alternative and holistic health practice in our community. Some of these young humans who I serve are refugees and mostly immigrants, individuals. That come from a very harsh life experience, running away from danger, seeking for safe and compassionate in a compassionate place where they can feel welcome. And a peace while learning and making new friends. With this said, some of these kids with their hard life life experience. Um, they have faced at such young age where. Due to power abuse and intimidation that came mostly from authoritative figures. Like police, border patrols, CPBs, just to name a few. I know this is very real and I can relate so much once because I was once one of those kids. Until this day, my body still reminds reminds me the feeling what is to be intimidated and seen. Less by figures who supposed to make me feel safe and welcome. Places like the rec center has been a location where I know many of my students like to gather, hang out, feel safe and comfortable. Playing and for a moment, forget what is to be in a place. Of fear. And just be a kid. The rec is essential place for a community to be healthy. It is a place to gather, to plan food, to share stories. While simultaneously learning to grow and see your food grow and then share with with others together. It's an action like action like this that helps heal and promote kindness and make our community more compassionate. Um, place for everybody. But as said, the idea of building a new police complex, it is not sustainable sustainable for our community well being, our mental health and our spirit. It will take away part of our spiritual nourishment. And food we sometimes take to their tables. I, as a mother. I reject the continued rhetoric rhetoric. The police is a public safety. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
My name is Vivian Ryder. I live at four seven seven East Fifth Street. Um, I'm a pediatrician here in Winona. I see families facing many challenges. These were present before the pandemic, but have multiplied with the disruption and isolation that the pandemic caused. These challenges include anxiety, depression, loneliness, boredom, too much screen time. And obesity. How do I try to help these families? I tell them to get their kids outside. To eat healthy food. To to get exercise, to hang out with their friends. I might not say this specifically, but they need community. I live three blocks from the rec center. Last year, in my four by twelve foot plot, I grew over eighty pounds of tomatoes. Among other things, I made friends there. I take my granddaughters to the park to play when they're visiting me. I see neighborhood kids playing on the basketball courts and in the park. I go to the winter farmer's market there. I believe the East End Rec Center is a treasure of Winona. And demolishing it would be a travesty. To try to say that we might get part of Saint Stans to use with really no plan in place. Um, is is not adequate and I really hope that this is defeated.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shree Hales. I live at five eleven East King Street. I too am a member of the Friendship Center. And have appreciated all the varied program that happens in that pretty inadequate space. Having listened to the presentations by Chief Biddle and Chief Williams, it's clear that the Law Enforcement Center and Third Street Fire Station are outdated. And don't meet today's needs. In this proposal, the current and future needs for law enforcement and fire EMT protection. Are given weighted consideration. But it seems to me that the needs of young people, families and elders are not being taken into account. You could almost say dismissed. The proposal to demolish East End Rec discounts the needs of many people who use the facilities and the grounds. And to suggest that a combined building on the site of Saint Stans lacking outdoor space. Can take its place is simply not realistic. It said that in planning, you need to consider future needs and growth. I could envision the rec center staying where it is. And the Friendship Center moving into Saint Stans. This would allow sharing space and expanding programming. Outdoor space could be increased by closing Zumbro Street. And this enlarged campus would assure the ability to meet community needs now and into the future. I recognize that needing to relocate multiple entities that serve the public interest. Is a complicated and expensive undertaking. I encourage the council to continue exploring location options for the LEC and the fire station. Because this current proposal is not the answer. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Uh, Ian Johnson, six one two West Fourth Street. Thank you for your time. I know these are tough decisions. I'd also like to thank anyone who responded to my emails, which was George Borzakowski and Steve Young. I didn't get a response from anyone else when I emailed, but. That's beside the point. After reading the public safety assessment, it's pretty clear that fire response times were the only impetus for the location of this site. And there was no thought given to the location of the police station or. To displacing the East End Rec. It doesn't appear that cost was given much consideration either. Aside from the financial cost estimates of the proposed preferred site. No costs were given for the alternatives in the public safety assessment. And I don't think safety and services for the children and families of our community were given much thought either. I have a quote from the International Association of Chiefs of Police from their Police Facilities Planning Guidelines. Quote, site location determines accessibility of the police facility to other government staff, the public and police officers. Unquote. This proposed site is not central to the city for our police. This site is far removed from the courthouse and the county jail. This site is far removed from the university campus, which let's be honest, probably generates most police calls. Um, this means that police will have less access to our communities and will be less accessible to other government buildings and agencies. Uh, two more quotes from the International Association of Chiefs of Police. Number one, make it clear that the police department has a stake in and impact on the quality of life in the community. Number two. The image of a police facility must be seen as synonymous with the government's image and of the community it represents. Now I'd like to list the cons of the proposed location from the Public Needs Safety Assessment. An alternate location for the East Rec Center will be required and has not been determined yet. Possible cost to acquire additional parcels. Additional costs for site demolition and utility work. That means that I believe that means you guys picked the most expensive option. Not hundred percent on that, but that's what it seemed like. So if we read back to the guidelines that we gave earlier, this means that our police will now be synonymous with the destruction of child and family resources. And with monetary waste, because as I understand it, a new facility next door was mentioned, but I believe the church has no interest in selling their building, meaning there's no viable. Plan for a new structure in place. So I asked, do we want to destroy the only year round facility that provides a safe place for the children of our community to play? With no plan or funding in place to replace it. We could save time and money with an alternate site or sites that also don't diminish fire response times. And I believe we should err on the side of preserving space for kids and families. Please don't wreck our East End Rec.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sierra Walker. I live at four seven four West Fifth Street here in Winona. Um, I first want to start off by saying, you know, I'm not here to bash the police or any of our. Safety resources. Um, however, I remember reading, you know, about three or four years back that Winona had a certain amount of time to get that new jail facility up and. And running and and living conditions for people that are incarcerated. Um, that plan didn't go into work until this year. Um, I've been in Winona for upwards of fifteen years now. I've been to the rec center. My children go there. Um, I have a child that's on the drum line team. My uncle is also the director of that. That is where they go to do their practices. Um, Tuesdays and Thursdays for three hours a day, I believe, two or three hours a day. Um, that's their safe space. For people of color, for children who are having struggles in their home life, that's their safe space. We are now taking that away or trying to take that away. Um, what happens with that police presence being there is that our children do become terrified and petrified. Or have to be on their Ps and Qs and, you know, don't spit the gum out in front of the cop because they'll see it on camera. They'll arrest us. The times that we're in now, um, in twenty twenty two, the police are not viewed as our friends. The fire safety is not viewed as our friends. Um, the community is our friend. We are the people, the people in the community. We are together. We are the neighborhood. Um, and to be quite frank, Winona is like all of seven or eight miles long. So if the response times for fire departments or police departments are. That terrible, that's an issue that needs to be addressed within the department because something else is going on. Um, it's not a, the the town is not very large. I mean, we. We're large in people, but as far as mile radius, we're not very large. So to just come in and to even. Think about destroying the only safe place and yet there's no other. Place for these children to be at. There's no Boys and Girls Club. The only thing that they have is the East End Rec. Um, some families cannot afford for their children to go to the YMCA because that's a monthly bill. Some people can't afford to take their children bowling, you know, even though there's some discounted rates. Some families can't afford to do that. Other families are still trying to recover from the pandemic and trying to get their finances in order and would like for their kids to have good memories of their childhood. How are they to do that if you guys are taking away the only thing that they have? In this town. Um, I would suggest that you think about the children because. They are our future. They are what's coming next in ten or twenty years. Winona shouldn't be just college and elderly. It it we we need to reuse our resources for the the children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kira Lepp. I live at three fifty two East Fifth Street. I have a lot of public speaking anxiety, but I figured this was a great reason to speak out. I've seen firsthand how beneficial the rec center can be. Kids need the safe place. I've also seen firsthand how harmful the jail system can be. Not only to the inmates, to their families, wives, husbands, kids and more. We need to invest in this community, not cages. So I just have one question. Who needs it more?
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Christine Lebeg. I live at one five six Mankato Avenue. Also a victim of public speaking nervousness, but here I go. I. Walk my dog by the East End Rec every morning. And the best thing is their children playing there. Is. A safe place and a value to the community as it stands today. Residents use it as a community center. The farmer's market, voting, a place to get vaccines and other services. Saint Saint Stan's School uses the playground for recess. The community uses the gardens to grow food and flowers. Children know this is a safe place to gather and that alone is immeasurable. Removing this resource would damage the safety of the neighborhood and the community as a whole, no matter any promises to replace it. We need it now and we have it now. Building this facility where children play does not prioritize the community, let alone the children. The quality of the neighborhood will decline. There will be increased traffic, sirens going off at all times, as they already do on Mankato Avenue. And the peaceful neighborhood will be disrupted. This is not a city center. This is a residential neighborhood. Also, there are plans for a gun range at this facility, from what I understand. Even if this facility is built with safety in mind, what is the safety of the neighborhood worth to you? The positive aspects of the ERC will be lost if the city prioritizes police over community and children. Renovating the existing police and fire facilities will cost less and use existing space, including the land purchased for this purpose years ago. The money proposed for this project would be could be spent on community and mental health services, as others have already mentioned. We do not need the proposed site for police and fire departments when we already have the ERC. The ERC already provides community safety and resources that should be protected and expanded instead. A police and fire station does not belong in a residential neighborhood next to a school. The needs of the neighborhood, especially the needs of the families and the children who live there. Should be priority. To this town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Marcia Ralip. I live at six fifty nine Huff Street. Um, and as many of you know, Engage Winona led the East End Neighborhood Project in two thousand nineteen. In partnership with the City of Winona and Art of the Rural. Over the course of the project, we connected with nearly four hundred people of all ages and backgrounds. Over seventy five percent of them were neighborhood residents and we collected more than three thousand unique comments. The project sought to bring together the whole neighborhood to celebrate its history and imagine its future. And many of you were involved. And probably remember telling stories and playing East End Bingo. Um, the project was about the East End and East Side neighborhood broadly, not the East Rec in particular. And yet the East Rec was prominent in responses from community members. Um, so in the spirit of you wanting to hear from the community. And we often hearing from the community and wanting to reflect that back to you. Um, so in the spirit of you wanting to hear from the community and we often hearing from the community and wanting to reflect that back to you. Um, in the interest of your upcoming decision, several folks have asked that we share findings from that project that are related to the East Rec. The project report and all raw data were shared widely in twenty nineteen and are available on our website as an archive. Um, and if you're interested in reading more, feel free to follow up with me. Um, some highlights that are quoted in their report. The East End Rec was by far the most mentioned that we heard in the whole project with more than a hundred and twenty-five comments. Specifically naming it as a favorite neighborhood place. This was prevalent among youth, families, and grandparents, as well as couples and adults in the neighborhood. Who said they appreciated a space that serves youth or they enjoyed using outdoor amenities. Many participants said that they enjoy the community garden and would like to see more opportunities for community gardens in other neighborhood locations. Participants were asked to imagine what changes they would like to see at the East End Rec. The top comments included teen activities, more family programs, a better play area, and programming to welcome more people of all ages. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Catherine Hesaminsky and I live at three oh nine East Fourth Street. That is halfway between the East End Fire Station and the HRA Tower. And it is my understanding, at least this used to be the case, that every time there's an, you know, a fainting or something at the tower. An ambulance, a fire truck, and a police car all arrive at the tower. So. In my job as a full-time grandmother, I have had many, many opportunities to have a two-year-old sit up and go, a fire truck, you know, in, in the middle of a nap. And it is a profound, I mean, I know it has to be somewhere. I have not had rancor in my heart against the fire station. But it's noisy and sometimes it goes on third and sometimes it goes right past my house. And either way. It's a substantial disruption if you've got little kids around. Um, to think of doubling that and having two emergency vehicles coming down past my neighborhood. All the time, every time there's an incident anywhere in the city is just like, it doesn't belong in a residential area. The East End Rec Center has been such a joy to me because when I had a three-year-old a few winters ago, it was a very, very cold winter, my granddaughter. There was a place to run. They gave us lunch. There was nowhere else and I had no peer group to connect with other. Grandparents my age who are also grandparenting. So I was really, really in need of it. I also attend the farmer's market there and I am a member of the community garden. The other thing is, there is a major historical basilica there that is really the pride of the Polish neighborhood that built it in the eighteen hundreds. To have a major government center a block away from that is just like, what? So I, it, it shouldn't be in a residential neighborhood, but it also shouldn't be in that residential neighborhood. My late husband's grandmother was the midwife for the whole East End during the thirties and forties. And she existed on barter and, you know, eggs and chickens would show up all winter to pay for the birth last summer. And I just want to say that the whole Polish community is the only ethnic Polish, it's the only ethnic group we have. Uh, traditional historical ethnic group we have that celebrates together. And I really want to say that the East End has gotten short end a lot. Uh, you know, the sewage treatment plant and the big electrical station and stuff, it's on the East End. And I mean, like, could you give the East End a break? And the other thing is that, um, I moved from Saint Cloud in nineteen ninety-four. And one of the reasons is that I did not like Saint Cloud's chilliness towards the people. And when I came to Winona and checked it out, they had this beautiful bike path and I thought, ah, here is a place that prioritizes people. And I would like to encourage you to do it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Amanda Johnsgard, fifty-three eighteen West Fifth. Most of what I've written down has already been covered, um, so I won't bore you with it. Um, I do want to say. Living in the U S is wild right now and, um. You know, a lot of people are coming to grips with the fact that our voices don't matter on a national level, even on a state level. But this is community and community is important. And if we can make a difference anywhere, it should be here. Um, a couple of people mentioned the YMCA and while it, it is not something that's affordable to everybody, it is, you know. Uh, a lower cost option for kids and let us not forget that that's very inaccessible now. Since it's relocation, um, kids cannot walk there. They cannot bike there. And if their parents do not have. Transportation or they're at work, they can no longer use that facility. Um, so the rec really is it. I reached out in the beginning of February when, um, we caught wind of this with my concerns. Um, I was told by Michelle that she refuses to pay rent to the county. However, I haven't seen any numbers on that or has there been a meeting to discuss what that looks like in the future or is that just a talking point? Um, she also told me that there would be robust community input before, um, any decisions were made. And thank you for hearing us today, but it's been seven months plus planning, investing time and money into this planning. So it doesn't seem like a very good faith argument. Um, Pam, you said you shared some of my concerns, um, and I hope you still do. Um, Steve, you just kind of missed the point altogether. And George, I appreciate you responding, but you barely made a full sentence and I. Highly suggest you use autocorrect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tara Bailey. Um, I am not only a parent of a child in this community, but also co-founder of the. I'm sorry?
Your address, please.
Uh, eight seventy-seven East King Street. Um, and for a very long time, we lived right on the corner of the East Rec. And while I really appreciate the East Rec, it's the most lackluster park I've ever seen in my life. And for as many creative ideas as the staff has at the rec, they just simply don't have the space. I'm gonna just lightly echo what everybody is saying. Yes, with the police culture in this, in this world right now. This is by far the stupidest decision to put cops on top of children. Um, and as a mom of an African-American child specifically, I can tell you this is not gonna go well. Whether it be for the kid being uncomfortable or whether it be for the parent feeling uncomfortable. But if you take this only place, and let's not forget that we're in a, in a time of drug epidemic. Okay, kids are starting as young as twelve and thirteen. If you take this rec from them. They will be on the, on the street in no time doing drugs and vandalizing what beautiful community we do have. And to echo something that someone said, this is only a seven to eight mile, um, town, city. There's a hundred other places you could probably go with this rec or this, uh, sorry, this police station or this fire station. But there's only one spot for the rec. Nowhere else is accessible. Nowhere else is completely free and runs year round. In fact, I've been to the West End Rec Center and I mean, they had a full kitchen, full closet for kids that needed clothes. Why is it that there can't be two centers like that coexisting within one town? And I also think it says a lot that we have children as young as eight, nine in here right now, wanting to speak on this. We have them protesting at this age because they simply feel like they, if they don't speak, they're gonna get rolled over. I mean, we really have to do better. I'm not from Winona, but I consider Winona my home. And it is diverse, but it's not diverse enough. We're seeing that with the Diversity Council, um, getting, getting dissolved with the schools. We need to be inclusive to everyone and that is the, what the rec is. I can't think of too many places that black, brown, white, Asian can all walk into a place and feel completely comfortable. If you put cops and, and the police or the fire station right on top of that. You can add, you can automatically assume that there will be nobody in there using your facility and you spent all that money for nothing. You know, you would like, you put it to the programs. I mean, my husband and I were able to start a self-funded program. So if we can do that. You guys can do better, period. And we're, we're low income technically. But you cannot take this from these kids. You please do not take this from these kids. And I do agree in bridging the generational gap. I do think the Friendship Center should be a part of it, but the cops and the fire station, they gotta find somewhere else to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, hi, I'm Shaqina Bailey. I just want to say, um.
Your address, please. Your address, please.
Seventy-seven East King Street.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to say I grew up going to the rec and it feels like a second home to me because. It's the only free place that I know that I can go to and feel completely comfortable, like my mom just said. And. I, that's messed up that you guys want to tear that down and put something that is not completely safe for everybody. And, um, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Wait, what do I say? Uh, my name is Journey and my just, my address is. East Wobba Sustrie, seven oh seven. And I don't want, I don't want the rec to be taken down because. Because we do drum line there and it's fun to go there. And if that, if we don't have that there, then they will, it won't be nowhere for. The kids to go to. And then if it gets moved, it's not gonna be. Comfortable where it wa, where it's not gonna be as comfortable where it was. When it wasn't moved.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anna Kemp. My address is five zero six College View Street. So I'm on the west end. But even I go to the East End Rec Center. Um, I have the Winona Gardening and Winter Sewing Group on social media that is over seven hundred people strong. And that shows that there's a trend towards gardening, not just because of the pandemic. People are still doing this in order to help their budgets, in order to feed their families good food. And my, one of my major reasons why I oppose the East End Rec Center being taken away is because of the community gardens. You have no plan in place. You say, oh, maybe we can buy Saint Stans. Maybe we can find other gardening places for people. Where are they going to grow their food next year? Where are they going to grow their food the, the year after that? People need places to grow healthy food for their families. And you're going to take that away with no real plan, no actual in-place plan to replace that. And that is a very big problem. Also, speaking as, uh, the mother of a fifteen-year-old son with autism. I don't know where I can take him. There's very few places he can go for community and to make friends. And he could go to the East End Rec Center. He could have community there. It's only recently that I've been finding out how much he could do there. But would I take him if there were police next door? Probably not. I'm not opposed to police personally. I've had positive interactions with the Winona Police. However, my son doesn't have what someone called normal reactions. If he's ordered to do something, he might freak out. So can he go there and be safe if it's right next door? Probably not. Um, I just don't know that he could be safe. So I appreciate you listening to the community and I really sincerely hope that you will reconsider this plan. And wait and come up with a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Chrissy Schumanik. I live at five five six East Fifth Street, so I am right next to Saint Stans. Um, I'm a mental health care practitioner and I am a graduate student at Winona State. I chose to move to the east side because it was somewhere I could find an affordable apartment. I've worked with adult men with substance abuse disorders and also with foster kids in this area. Uh, through the Family and Children's Center. And I think a big thing that needs to be touched on with this is that. The East End is where a lot of people move because it's affordable. Because of a lot of the things that have happened downtown, all the new buildings and the infrastructure that's come in. It's really expensive to live there now. Uh, rent has really skyrocketed and then the things that are affordable are college homes that. Are really run down and potentially very moldy or have, uh, the ability to pose health risks for the people that are moving in. So it's really worrisome to me as a resident of that neighborhood. That we would be taking out a place that's free for children to go, especially a lot of my clients. Uh, I can't really like speak too much on it just because of privacy concerns. Uh, they moved to the East End, uh, after, for example, going through a treatment program and going through. All of these other things that they've had to work really hard to get through with addiction in particular, and they're finally getting. Their kids back and they have people working with them and they're following programs and protocols and. A lot of people, if you're coming out of those situations, uh, you can't afford to move downtown, for example. And then you get those access to resources for your kids to go and it takes a lot of stress off the parents, especially because. When you're dealing with mental health issues, uh, it's a lot. And, uh, you're working really hard to better yourself and to keep your finances straight and really prove that you can be a certain way. And, um, I think that it would actually cause a lot more problems. I know in this country and especially in this state, uh, Mankato especially is dealing with it really bad. The increase in, uh, drug issues and there's also a lot of drug crime around here. Uh, meth is basically an epidemic in the Midwest because it's so cheap and a lot of people here are blue collar workers. And unfortunately, factories have been shutting down, which those have also been moving out of Winona, which is worrisome because. A lot of people here are blue collar workers. So I would just urge everyone to think about the financial implications and the social implications of putting this there because. People aren't gonna feel safe and they're also gonna lose a lot of resources, uh, that would help them and their families be healthier and safer in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Spencer Clausen. I live at four oh nine East Sanborn Street. I worked at the East End Rec Center in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. I've also worked at Main Square Montessori. And currently I'm doing work with Seekers Wild with children getting outside. So. I've really appreciated the East End Rec being in so many environments. Previously, I've also worked at other. Summer camps and parks and rec up in the cities in Roseville. And the East End Rec blew me away. When I first got there. I'd never seen something do so much with so little. It, it blew me away. So. Most of the points I'd want to make have been touched on, so I, I just echo that. It almost seems if. The message isn't clear already, it looks like it'll be reiterated many times. Um, hopefully you listen. Um, but here's a poem because that was the best way I could get out my feelings. Listen carefully to those who lack the resources to speak loudly. In the East End Rec, many of these voices echo. Children whispering of their hunger to a caring staff. Older siblings checking in on those who would be in childcare if mother could afford it. Meals shared between those who wouldn't otherwise be eating and those with excess. A sense of autonomy vacant in all other aspects of many of these lives. A space that feels welcoming. Some who have not experienced watching a loved one taken away by police may not recognize the fear that uniform can produce. How unsettled a gun can make someone who has witnessed violence against their loved ones. Someone who just wants a space to feel safe, a space where there is trust, a community. A constant presence of blue uniforms and weapons designed to control will displace this community once again. And although the signs and the papers may say that all are welcome, they have enough experience to know better.
Thank you.
Hello, um, my name's Sharon Mansour. I'm at one eight one Harvester Avenue, Winona, Minnesota. And I really appreciate a chance for us to be speaking to you all tonight and I hope there are many more opportunities in the future. Uh, I'm an artist and educator and community engager and I've been involved here in Winona for about seventeen years and I hope for many more. And, um, as an artist, uh, rather than echoing a lot of what was just said, I. Uh, did a bit of a meditation on that response timeframe and I just wanted to offer this back to you. What is the city's response time to ensure our youth have healthy and safe environments to gather? Play, exercise, connect, learn and thrive outdoors and indoors. What is the city's response time for prioritizing our seniors? Our black and brown residents, our queer youth, and other marginalized communities. What is the city's response time to create a police-free zone for residents to gather without being under surveillance? Or in close proximity to trauma on a regular basis? What is the city's response time to maintaining our vital green spaces? What is the city's response time? To listen to residents who have already been speaking clearly? What is the city's response time to this moment? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Catherine Soblet. I live at.
My name is Catherine Soblet. I live at one fifty Pleasant Hill Drive, Winona, Minnesota. And um, we were one of the first black families here in Winona and I am opposed to what's happening at the rec center. Because you know, there is just nothing for the children around here, especially for the children that are living in marginalized communities and children of color. The last thing that they want to see is a policeman next to them. Why? Because. Uh, historically, all the decisions in Winona, and I've been to many of these meetings, are made by people whose children don't even access these facilities. And so that is difficult. You know, we, uh, two years ago, three years ago, they had a parade here in Winona and I'll never forget it. They had a drum line that was performing from Minneapolis and we waited the whole parade. They were the last act. And right now I would have to say to Winona, we're tired of being the last act. We're tired of being the last people that are heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is TJ Abrahamlin. Um, my address is two thirteen Vine Street here in Winona. Uh, I moved to Winona here after, I've worked in the community for about six years. Um, moved here in in twenty twenty to Goodview and bought a house last year. And my girlfriend and I plan on staying here for years to come. Um, personally, I've worked with a number of youth. Uh, that have a lot of mental and emotional behavioral disorders. Um. And we found the rec to be a haven for these children. Uh, the term community has been tossed around quite a bit tonight. And it's glad, or along with everything that has been said, I just want to build upon that. Uh, with the individuals that that we work with. Um, a number of neat things have happened because of the rec center. Uh, there have been some individuals who find others to build community with. There have been friendships. Uh, there is teaching that goes on there. There are skills that are developed. There's a lot. Of programming that goes informally in the rec that I think could be enhanced with more formal programming, but that is not necessarily my, my stance tonight. Um, so I just want to really bring awareness to my being in the rec. So many people that I've spoke have been in the rec. Not only in the summer, um, but particularly in the winter months when there is nowhere else to go. It is not just an escape. Again, it's a place to build friendships. It is a place for people to build community. Where I'm talking with individuals who go from eating lunch alone to having a group that they eat for years with throughout their high school years. That started in in middle school and and carried on, and so I just sincerely, sincerely hope that our words are being heard tonight. That we're not just considering fiscal uh, means for this decision. Um. There is a community being impacted and it starts while they, while our children are in school. And it is really built after those school hours, so please take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alexis Hayes, seven one seven East Third Street. I used to go to the eastern rec all the time as a kid. Um, every single weekend, every break from school, I was at the rec. I loved it because it was a place that you could go that was free. It was almost a guarantee all your friends would be there. The staff was always friendly. I liked playing outside on the playground, hanging out inside, playing basketball. Granted, not very well. But not being good at basketball didn't take the joy out of it for me. What would have taken the joy out of basketball would have been if a cop ever wanted to, as Mayor Scott Sherman stated at a meeting earlier this year. Knock down some threes with me before their shift because cops should not be in that space. As an adult now, I go to the eastern rec for the winter farmer's market. It's where I vote. And I go there for different community events as well. I live in that neighborhood. I live closer to the eastern rec than I ever have and I will not feel safe with the police station in my backyard. If this had been a proposal when I was a kid, I would have definitely stopped going to the rec because I would have felt unsafe. Kids today are expressing these same sentiments. They want spaces that belong to them, where they can have fun. And most importantly, where they feel safe. I have younger siblings. I've talked to them and their friends and they don't want this. They will not feel safe in a space where there are cops, especially as kids of color, black and brown kids. They will not feel safe. And if you move forward with this proposal and tear down the eastern rec to combine it with the police station. Put it near a police station or replace it with a police station. You are directly telling the children in Winona that you prioritize cops over kids, period.
Thank you.
Anthony Hallman, four eleven Mankato Avenue. I had a lot of things that I wanted to say. Unfortunately, a lot of them were taken by the many other members of this community. And so I've been thinking in the back of the line, what am I gonna say when I get up here? Because a lot of it has been taken away from me and a thought occurred to me. Did you ask? Did the members of this council truly ask the members of this community? About this proposal before it was started, before we decided to bring cops into the rec center? Did you ask? And I'm gonna answer for you because it kind of seems like no would be the right answer to that because if you would have asked. You would have heard from the kids at the rec center. You would have heard from the seniors at the friendship center. You would have heard from mental health professionals. You would have heard from medical professionals. You would have heard from the community members standing here before you today pleading, do not do this. If you would have asked, this meeting would not be going on and this proposal would not have moved forward because we would have told you. Do not do this. Putting the police with the east end rec does not promote public safety. Mental health care promotes public safety. Medical care promotes public safety. Voting rights. Promote public safety. Bringing the community together, food security, these are things that promote public safety. Investing in these programs will bring public safety. Putting cops in different locations does not. So I encourage you, before you continue to move forward, ask. Because if you would have, we wouldn't have to be here right now.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for holding this public hearing on plans for the east end rec center. My name is Colette Hyman. I live at four seventy-two West Broadway. And I'm here to express my opposition to any plan that would further limit the recreational opportunities for children in the city of Winona. I've been living here since nineteen ninety and over the past decade or so, the city has seen a decline. In these opportunities and spaces. The West End Rec Center has been turned over to a business that charges five dollars for admission. The remains of the playgrounds at the now closed Madison and Central Elementary Schools are poorly maintained, if at all. They are inadequate and unsafe. There is no open recreation space for children west of downtown that does not require crossing a busy street. Uh, Sarnia or Broadway or Fifth Street. And you are now effectively proposing to take away this well-used, well-loved center. That serves so many different purposes in addition to being a place where kids can play in safety. Please stop this assault on children and on their spaces. If you want to invest in city infrastructure, invest in our children, not the police. Upgrade and expand the ERC. Do not replace it with the proposed monstrosity. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brett Kimber. I live at two twenty Janet Marie Lane. I'm born and raised in Winona. Opposition to these plans for a new police station at the location being considered is widespread and strong throughout the entire community. And it feels as though this council concerns itself more with the needs of city staff than the needs of community members. City staff is allowed to address the council while public comment at meetings is prohibited. The council has instructed our city attorney to draft a public comment policy for every meeting. He has had more than a reasonable amount of time to do so, but to date has not produced one. Why? The need for a new police station is there, but I am of the personal opinion that this department does not deserve one based off their behavior. And an implementation of a community policing philosophy. Furthermore, the Winona Policing Commission has found the community's most pressing need is affordable housing, not for our police officers. Winona area public schools does not allow Winona Police Department to provide security in our schools. At a time in this country when this is a normality. Due to the targeting of them and a very real threat from the mentally ill with guns. If they do, our officers harass, bully and intimidate the students. They were removed two years ago for their behavior and here we are today begging our city council not to invade safe youth spaces and rec centers. By allowing their presence permanently at them with a police station built onto their locations. Winona PD has larger problems than their building. Chief Tom Williams recently was reported to the city for alleged.
You're out of order?
No, I'm not.
Yeah, you are. We are done, Brett.
I'm not allowed to speak?
Not regarding any privacy dat- data privacy act. If you want to speak to the public safety building, you may.
The city of Winona paid a private firm to perform a five-month. That they refused to disclose the results of publicly.
Brett, you need to leave right now.
We will be asking the state not to fund your building.
Hello, my name is Sandy Brooks. I live at seven six seven East Mark Street. I live at seven six seven East Mark Street here in Winona. I'm here to speak. I'm definitely against the proposal because I'm a mother of four. My oldest son is eight years old and he loves the rec center. Like some days I even have trouble pulling him out of there because he having so much fun. I mean, the stories that he tells me in there, the love, the care that they have for the children is beautiful. I even spent time in there and I'm thirty-one years old. But I love the rec center and I think that y'all should not take the rec center down. We have nothing else in this community for our children. This is the only thing we have. We don't have a boys and girl club, anything for them, you know, and I just feel like. It would be devastating to our children, to our community. I know y'all always ask for our community output. Well, listen to your community. We here standing up for our children, for people all kinds, all colors, doesn't matter. The rec center is definitely a safe place. My son, he's afraid of police officers and I hate to say that. He see everything that goes on his world and he's afraid, he's terrified. So putting something like that definitely, like. Buy the rec center would definitely, I feel, have a big safety for the children. They won't want to go play anymore. They want to be free anymore. And I just feel like you would be making a big, big mistake if y'all did that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Danielle Fords. I live at nine one five West King Street and I just moved here a year ago. And I really like it here because. The first day I went to the farmer's market, I sat down with my husband across from. I don't know, about seven senior citizens who immediately welcomed me at their table, broke bread with me, told me all about. Their lives, their histories in Winona and that made me love it immediately because the community was welcoming to me. And I've lived in a lot of places. Every single place was at least double, if not triple or more the size of Winona. I've lived in Los Angeles. I've lived in a suburb of Detroit. I have lived in upstate New York. None of those places had a space dedicated for children to play safely inside. The closest you got to was a library and a library is a great place to read, but let me tell you, it's not a great place to grow food. It's not a great place for kids to play. I believe that I can imagine a new future, a future. That doesn't look like this, where I have to stand here and say it's important that kids have space to play. And I have to say, following your logic, that it's uninspiring that the future you imagine. Is one where we need more cops because you think there's gonna be more crime when it really sounds like you're creating a problem to solve it. In order to fund a business model where our safety is literally the tool of your trade. It just, it's not right. And I'm not a defeatist. I still believe in imagining new futures. And I believe that Winona is going to be that space. And when I got here, I lived uh, on the east side. Because it was the only space, the east side is the only place I could find somewhere to live that would accept two dogs and a cat. So, okay, I moved there. I live three houses from the Purple Dinosaur Park. You can imagine my dismay. When I get here and I find out that one of the possible early proposals was to occupy the dinosaur park. That is one of the only openly green spaces you're gonna get rid of the gardens. Horrible. And now I know, because I'm a homeowner, I just bought my house, that it is expensive to renovate a house. But it is nine times more expensive to build a new one. And so, and I've done it all myself, so I know. Hiring no contractors, it's expensive. I don't understand why you can't renovate these other spaces. And why the best option is still more expensive than these other options. I just ask you to be more imaginative, please, for me who's new here, but also for all these people who have lived here. Ten times longer than me who have been a member of this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Zold and I live at eight oh eight West Wabashaw Street here in Winona. I'm here to oppose the building of the police fire station and obviously tearing down the east end rec center. Public safety is about investing in the community. Public safety is about making community members feel safe and comfortable. In public spaces and buildings. Public safety is about elected officials listening to what the public wants. Even or especially when they are getting opposing pressure from other places. Part of why I'm here is because my father was a sheriff's deputy for over twenty years in a small town in northern Wisconsin. He lived there his whole life and raised seven kids there. To say he was invested in that community is an understatement. When I was a kid, my dad got threats against him and our family. They got so bad that we had to get a caller ID box for our landline. Yes, I'm that old. And I wasn't allowed to answer the phone. But it wasn't because my dad was a cop. It was because he was on the school board advocating for a new school. It seems to be a pattern that people get upset when you want to spend money on kids. So I tell you this because I am certain you all are facing pressure to tear down the rec center. Or rather, you're probably facing pressure to build this new police and fire station. I ask you to please listen to the people in the community who use the rec center and who do, and do what's right for them. I mean, to tear down the rec center only to replace it with a police and fire station is almost a parody of the terrible decisions our elected leaders have been making at all levels. In this country. I am sick of law enforcement eating up city budgets and public space when we should be investing in tho- those, that money. In our community members. I don't normally say this to other adults. Get it together.
Thank you.
Good morning, nah. Afternoon, okay. Uh, my name is Brian Larson. I live at six three six Franklin. Now, when I was a wee lad back in the dark ages of two thousand nine. The city council of Abbotsford, Wisconsin, my hometown, decided to tear down the elementary school. Leave the public playground that was loved. It was revered by my city's youth. And replace it with a combo police-fire station. That sound familiar to any of you? Now, I'm gonna give you one guess as to how many people use that. Nobody, because it is under the constant threat and surveillance of people who do not like your existence. Those people are cops. And it's personal for me. I've had cops come into this neighborhood. I started going, walking with my best friend to a park four blocks away. Because it was just sirens. It was people watching you to make sure you didn't do anything stupid. Spoiler alert, kids need space to do dumb things. That's why they're kids. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna put this out there one more time. This is the most short-sighted decision I think I've ever seen a city council make and I'm from a town in Wisconsin that's ran by conservatives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kendall Larson. I live at six fifty-two East Fourth Street. Um, so my dad was a retired public works director from Duluth, big city. And when I was talking to him about this, he was pretty shocked and you got an email from him, um, but he told me, he's like, when you make decisions. Um, administrators tend to think of like, will this harm people? First, do no harm. And this does harm. I, I want to say, you know, ta- basically you've kind of tacked on a rec center and that's kind of the excuse that's gonna be used to put this through. That's kind of the way I see it. It shouldn't be. What I believe. What I believe you should do is return to the table immediately because I know time is of the essence and start talking to all the partners in this city. I, I know it's a lot of work for administrators. I, I know you, that it's very difficult to come back to table, but um, you just, you just need to. I mean, that's what we're asking you to do tonight. Um, and what I, I see you need to do is invest in the east rec. Make it the best center you can. Expand the green space. So it's like Sinclair Park. I mean, it can't be quite Sinclair Park with a space, but make it that instead of taking it away with parking lots and buildings and, and cars. So please change your minds. We need you to be creative. We need you to come back together as a city council. We need to do this for the people. We're asking you right now. I mean, I live right across the street and um, it's my neighborhood. Um, but I see all sorts of people in my neighborhood and other people advocating for it because they use it and we need it for everyone in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Ventura. I live at seven two four East King Street, which is just a few blocks away from the east end rec. And shout out to Willie and Nikos and Journey and all the kids who are just awesome and brave enough to speak in front of a room packed with adults. Um, I am against the current proposal of replacing the ERC with a combined public safety building, quote unquote. Um, I'm for investing the things that, in the things that actually make our communities safe. I am for investing more in the east end rec and investing in uh the senior center and I just, I, you know, I was just going to repeat what people said, but I just want to repeat because it's, we need it apparently, that police, the institution of policing is not a core pillar of public safety. Police are people with jobs and I am pro people. And people as, who are employed as police can get different jobs. We have a huge, you know, worker shortage. I am wondering why it hasn't been addressed to that putting a east and, putting a rec center by a fire and police station where emergency vehicles are going to be leaving as quickly as possible on the same streets and sidewalks that kids are going to be walking around, hanging in, hanging out and playing. That doesn't sound very safe to me and it sounds like an accident kind of waiting to happen just from like a transportation standpoint. And um, the reason too why I want us to actually as a community invest in things that make us safe is because the institution of policing, the, the tools that police have are largely physical violence, financial violence, isolation. And then because of that, force and coercion. And um, our, our police have gotten a lot of money already with this new huge jail being built right by our river. And um, we know that the people who will fill that jail and continue to fill that jail will be people who are experiencing addiction, people who are experiencing mental distress, people who have high ACE scores and trauma histories, people who don't have a lot of money in their bank account or who are experiencing domestic violence or whose parents are. We know that violence begets violence, so we don't create health and safety with forced coercion, financial or physical violence. We create safety by investing in um, green spaces that are safe for kids and free and for adults in more spaces like the rec and for senior center, um, investing in things that will help us deal with climate change. Affordable housing, again and again, affordable housing for people who aren't college students. So that's what I would really like to see our community invest our dollars in and, and work to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Talon Rabey. I live at seven twenty four East Ninth Street. And I would just like to talk a little bit about the finances of this. It's not a good time to be taking out debt, just economically. Let's face that. Many of us are struggling. One in five Winonnans live below the poverty line. In the last ten years, the Winona police budget has risen faster than the rate of inflation while our population has dropped. So you already have more resources to police fewer people than you did ten years ago. Well, yeah, you're, you're stealing from children. You're straddling us with debt because our supposed public servants can't clean their gun next to a microwave or deal with small closets. Get over it. We're all struggling. Get over yourselves.
Thank you.
Chloe Walsh, uh, nine one nine East Wabashaw. And um, all I really have to say is I've seen a ton. I am so proud of this community right now for coming and telling you guys how they feel about this because this is real. And I've seen people of all backgrounds, of all ages, and we all want to protect the rec. And uh, if you don't want to listen to me, then you can listen to Angenaia and Joy. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Save our rec! We'll do it one more time and whoever else wants to join in can. Ready? One, two, three. Save our rec!
Thank you.
Uh, hi, I'm Sarah Johnson, uh, fifteen fifteen West Fifth Street. And I'm here to oppose the tearing down of rec center. As a social worker and mental health in this community, I've been told multiple times that sometimes it's just not a place for a social worker. And I've had to learn to just accept that and move on and continue my work. And so I'm going to flip the script and say, maybe this just isn't a place for a cop. And maybe you just have to accept that. Because you don't have the right to tell people what scares them and what they should and shouldn't be afraid of. So if people are telling you this makes them uncomfortable, listen to them. That's your job. We as a community don't need to just give up and let you guys steamroll us because you feel that somebody deserves this. All of us are deserving here of new things, but we don't get it. We have to keep working hard. And we don't have to keep listening to these empty promises from our police, from our city council, knowing that they may or may not come true. We need evidence and facts. And I concur with everything else everyone's been saying.
Thank you.
And my name is Amber Beisman and my address is six zero seven East Broadway. I am opposed to the proposed public safety center and the demolishing of the eastern rec center. Uh, many of those reasons have already been stated. So I don't need to reiterate them. Um, I was thinking about what I can say and community, community. This should be the council for the community of Winona. And during this pandemic, where did I find community? In Engage Winona, under neighbors helping neighbors page. That's where community is, is in the people. And that's why your job is to listen to the people. And I would just like to say that if you vote for this to go forward, you have, our, our comments have fallen on deaf ears and this year is an election year and you need to be voted out. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Andre Bailey. I live at eight seven seven King Street. There's a, uh, I have a strong motto and it's God, community, love. You know, and I started uh, the Drumline three years ago. And when I went in that place, it was different for me because that place accepted me and my children. And I don't have nothing against the cops because we need the cops. And that's where the love come in. That's where community come in, guys. You know, without the cops, I mean, who going to protect us? Let's see, but the, but, but the main, the main focus of it all is love. Love. And we love the rec. If y'all tear the rec down, I mean, even it, I know, I, I've been here almost seventeen years and I've never had a problem with the police officers. I was the problem when I was here. But they did, they wouldn't like Chicago cops. They wasn't like California cops and they wasn't like New York cops. See, we, we don't want to make this thing big like that because Winona is not like that. It goes back to love. And I'm quite sure everybody on this panel, we all know each other. We all know each other. But one thing that I do know is that the rec is a powerful place for children and families. A lot of the kids that go there are, are low income family. They do, these kids don't have a lot of, have a lot of money or nothing. But the rec provides for them. You tear that down, we ain't going to have nothing.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Madison Shear. I live at four seventeen East Fourth Street. I would just like to say that I oppose expulsion and I concur with all the other points that have been made about love and community and supporting the kids. I also just want to say that putting so many children in such close proximity to so many individuals with firearms is blatantly irresponsible and we've seen it time and time again. And we have to make better decisions for our future. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Debbie Von Arx. I live at five two seven East Fourth Street. And I just want to say that I do not want the rec center taken down. I don't want least officers to be there. I like police officers. They've, they've been really good to my kids, my grandkids. But the rec center is a place where kids play. And when I was a kid, I really didn't want to play with police officers around. I wasn't doing anything wrong, but I really didn't want them around just because they were any more than I wanted my teachers or my principal of my school hanging around with me. They have a space and they have a job and they kept me safe and I knew it, but they didn't belong in my backyard. I'm also worried about the traffic. The point about the vehicles, this is a residential neighborhood. You know, that's not a residential. Police officers are not residential guys. They don't live there. They drive fast. They've, us old people have enough trouble crossing Broadway. We don't want to have to worry about crossing Fourth Street. A point about the rec center, I was a special ed teacher for a million, million years. And I know that supervised play area for kids is really, really important. The rec center has people standing there. Got all these little kids sitting around coloring. I go over there with my grandkids. And got all these little kids, black kids, white kids, every color kid coloring. And there are these kids, young, a little bit older, talking with them. They're just talking with them, you know, shooting the breeze. Maybe my granddaughter Letty wanted to play pool. A little black boy came over and said, can I show you how? Do you want me to show you, you want me to show you how? I mean, this is a wonderful melting pot, which is what we need in America right now. In Winona, we need that right now. You know, people helping people, people getting to know people. It's fabulous. It's a wonderful place. We need this supervised area for the kids. We need this free place. We need this air conditioned place in this hot weather for kids who, everybody doesn't have air conditioning. You know, they can't all go to the library. Kids like the rec to go and be cool and play there. It's a good place. You know, I worked in home and school, which was a little old fashioned school. It was built by the early settlers who were there. It was the middle school where I worked. We had the oldest building when I started there and everybody said, it has to be remodeled. It hasn't, tear it down. People said, no, they're, it can't. Well, they remodeled it. They remodeled it over and over again. And now it's beautiful. It's got, it's state of the arts and it's beautiful. Bit by bit, they put in things. You know, we could, we should think about that for our fire space, space and for our police. Think about how you can remodel it. Last, finally, my granddaughter Letty, who is not a writer, wrote on every single block on my whole, all the way around the block, save the rec. That's how strongly she feels about this space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anna Jarvis. I live at two five seven eight seven Almond Drive. And even though I live outside of the city, I've lived in Winona most of my life and I'm still a Winona resident. And my kids still come down here. They were at the rec center a couple of weeks ago and I saw what a beautiful place it was in the outdoor area and the gardens and stuff. One of the things that Winona has always struggled with is a place for our youth to go and for things for them to do that are safe and not getting into trouble. That has been a problem since I was a kid where we were just wandering around the streets looking for something to do. It's always been some, a struggle here. The rec center is a place that even little tiny kids can go and they can have a place that's safe and they have things to do and they have people that are supervising and making sure they're not getting into big trouble. And yet they feel free to be kids and do the things that kids want to do. When I went there, they had big community gardens and I think that's a really important part to bring in with kids. Having people that are older and doing the cross generations is really important. And it's good for establishing community. If you take away the rec center's community gardens, you're taking away a big part of what is the community rec center. Your thing that you're establishing is establishing an indoor place where the kids can't play outside. They're not going to have this cross generational communication that is really important. You're taking it away and you don't even know that you can do it. Going for something and saying that we're going to do this and it's a proposed thing when you don't even know it's possible, that really frustrates me. And it frustrates a lot of people as I can see here. My kids have been waiting out in the hall for an hour and a half because they know that this is important and then I need to be here to talk. And so, so do all these other people. This is one of the busiest community meetings I've seen. You need to take that into account and recognize that this is important to your community and everybody that's going to vote for you. And what we want, what do we, what is our vision of Winona? We want more community. We want a better sense of us being together. You look at like the news today and the shooting in the parade on the Fourth of July is happening more and more. And what that says happening is from a discommunication, the people that are isolating themselves and not being part of the community. We don't want that here. We want to make a difference. We want a sense of community. We want to be together. And I hope you take that into account.
Thank you. Hello, can you hear me? Show us of Mulkey or fifteen Willsey Street. I want to take a minute to remind the city council that your job as elected officials is to represent the public in city government. It's not the opposite. It's not to represent the city government to the people. It's not to represent the police department, the fire department, the public works department or any other department or the city administration to the people. Your job as elected officials is to represent the people in city government. And what the people of Winona are telling you is that the police department and the fire department are not priorities. They are not priorities to us. What is a priority is parks. What is a priority is the east end rec. And nobody here is fooled by the fact that this slim chance that you could possibly build an inferior building at the St. Stan's property is a one to one trade for the current full block gardens, playground, basketball hoops that the east end rec currently exists on and, and indoor space. So I want to remind you, your job as elected officials is not to represent the city to us, but to represent us in the city. And we are here to tell you, that's not a priority. The east end rec as it is, is a priority. The senior center upgrade is a priority. That plan has been in place and been worked on for years. That is a priority to us as a city. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Freya Wolf and I live at five two two East Ninth Street, Winona. And I oppose the plan to remove the rec and build a combined police fire complex. I'm seventeen years old and I skipped and canceled on plans with my friends to be here to talk to you because I believe this is important. I grew up in the east side and have spent many days at the rec and have plans of spending many day, more days there this month, working on a youth art project. I would like to concur with what many of my fellow community members have said and bring up a couple more things I think are crucial. At a time where the country I'm living in is attacking my reproductive rights, I deserve not only the right to decide where to have, whether to have children, but to also be able to raise those children in a safe environment if I choose. The east end rec provides that safe environment. Police officers do not. I'm going into my senior year at Winona Senior High School and have already seen the effects of the school to prison pipeline and what a lack of support can cause. Furthermore, I am the co-president of our school's GSA, the Gender and Sexuality Alliance, and therefore have friendships and connections with many vulnerable queer students that need places like the rec. Whether it be because their community is not accepting or their very own family, sometimes places like our group and the rec is the only place they can find support. People my age and children even younger have emphasized that police officers do not make us feel safe and they often do quite the opposite. We have shown this by fighting to get police out of our- We have shown this by fighting to get police out of our schools by showing up at this city council meeting and being some of the biggest age groups in Black Lives Matter protests and fights for changing our police system. What we need is mental health support, financial assistance for our families' creative outlets and friendships, communities. All things that the East End Rec provides. So please, at least this once, listen to me and listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bruno Borsari. I live at two sixty Liberty Street. So I'm just five blocks from the Eastern Rec. And when I was a new Winona in two thousand and five, moving from Western Pennsylvania with my family for the job that I held at Winona State in the Biology Department until few years ago, that was definitely the safety net from my two very active boys in their pre-teen teenage years. And I also joined them volunteering at the rec. Bringing my personal experience. Maybe initially it was just the exotic experience because I talk with a strong accent. And so I remember being invited maybe to groups of preschoolers, okay? Just to talk about my country of origin, you know, Italy and pizza and pasta and bread and all those good things, okay? But then in two thousand and seventeen, I became really even more active with the idea of developing the garden. My background, like I said, is in biology, agronomy, agri-cology. I'm Italian. Food means a lot to me, right? And so we heard also tonight that there are a lot of people whom I have met as well through the years that are actually gardening in these very hard times to provide food that is becoming more and more expensive. So besides the social aspect, and we heard a lot about it, I'm also bringing a little bit of evidence about the validity of the community garden at the Eastern Rec. This, I'm bringing you with great pride, is a book chapter that in twenty eighteen was published by Springer Verlag in a text, in a book called Lifelong Learning and Education in Health and Sustainable Cities. The paper is titled Achieving Sustainability in the City of Winona, Minnesota: A Case Study. You know who are the co-authors in addition to myself? Neil Mandel, another professor at Winona State, but Anne Morse, the former recycler guru in town, right? And also Ms. Pat Mutter, for all things concerned with making Winona a destination for tourism. And tourism is great because we want to make Winona the city of the arts like, you know, Florence, but it's also for the environment, okay? So here, okay, as we have major indicators, the major indicators to make our city sustainable are conserving parks and parks and green areas, urban landscaping, and urban agriculture. Okay, we've been losing gardens like the garden at Winona Health, the garden at Watkins, one block and a half from where I live. So this is, the East End Rec is a long-term project that has been building a fabric around the theme also of gardening that is absolutely priceless, is a safe space. We have the bees and my friend Fred here can talk about the honeybees with whom we have been doing education programs every summer for kids as they were playing and their families and the gardeners too. Please save the Eastern Rec.
Thank you.
I'm gonna remind everyone to keep the clapping. This is cool.
I'm Mary Jo Clinker and I live at one fifty six East Broadway. I'd like to follow up with the question Anthony posed, did you ask? I am here to put on record with the majority of the community stating that I oppose the plan to demolish the rec and its green spaces in order to build a police-fire complex. Since July twenty twenty one, when you announced the branding of the proposed building as public safety, we have collectively been silenced until now. So you need to sit with the discomfort of accountability as we vocalize our opposition. I reject the branding of this building as public safety, as many people have expressed. Investing in policing is harmful to our entire community as it comes at the expense of investing in our collective safety through education, healthcare, housing, childcare, and community green spaces. Winona has not prioritized such public safety needs. Take as evidence the economic development. That is the site of Winona's investment in housing. It has only increased a hundred and ninety thousand dollars from two thousand and eighteen to twenty twenty, contrasted with the police budget, which has increased nearly one million dollars over that time period. Who decides this? You do. As a methodologist, which I am, I'm trained in community advocacy. I know that centering those most impacted by systemic oppression are central to social change. For this reason, I have met with children and families who use the rec and asked what they would invest in if they were in charge of the budgets. They shared the following. A winter greenhouse, a drinking fountain by the park that actually works. A splash pad, especially because not every kid can afford the pool. Update the park, spend more money on books for the Rec Center, have family counselors and mentors available. This wish list offers a vision of true public safety. The thirty-eight to forty-two million dollar plan that you proceeded to examine for six months while censoring our entire community provides none of these visions. It does however include the following. The removal of the community gardens, a private gym for police, a parking garage for the mine-resistant ambush-protected US military vehicle the city owns jointly with the county, and a below-surface gun range. A private gym and a gun range. This is the wish list that you're prioritizing under the guise of public safety. Budgets are moral documents and your vote will make clear the priorities and visions you have for this community, our community. Keep the fire and police at their current sites and leave children in our neighborhoods alone and free from increased surveillance and from violent presence of police and military weaponry. The current proposal is a threat to East End neighborhoods. It will further exacerbate the profiling, harassment, and surveillance of youth. Which make no mistake, has already been well documented by the Minnesota Department of Human Rights as a structural reality in Winona. Our community deserves wellness, safety, and health. I'm tired of writing a blank check for police and their wish list. Fund children, the Friendship Center, our community, and not cops.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Eric Wright. I work, or I live at four sixty eight East Third Street. I have three kids. I've been here about twenty years. Kids range from twelve to nineteen and we've spent a lot of time at the Rec Center. We really do appreciate it and it's certainly a thing that I would like to fund more heavily. It's a place that includes the farmer's market, Earth Day, school events, community garden. It's really a genuine community center and people do genuinely feel safe there. Given my address, four sixty eight East Third, I live directly across, across from the fire station. You know what? Those guys are just great neighbors. They are considerate. They go above and beyond. They try really hard not to make too much noise and disturbance. And I really wish we could update their facility in a sane, coherent way that's not going to cost our community. As for the police, I've not had any bad experiences with the police here in Winona personally. But other places I have, I've been lied to by police, lied about by police. I've been coerced, threatened, et cetera. And I'm like your standard typical cis white male that just has all of the privilege anyone can ask for and I still got harassed. It's fair for people to feel threatened by police presence. It's fair for them to feel uncomfortable in the presence of, of people who are armed and whose job it is to constantly be looking for another way to catch you or someone in a lie, in misbehavior, in a crime, like trying to ferret out what you're doing wrong. Because we have all been pulled over and had that experience, have we not? I hope we have. Anyway, I really just don't support having police as neighbors at four sixty eight East Third. Because I don't think they'd be the awesome neighbors that our fire department is. However, when you would put that up against eliminating the rec or changing it to an unrecognizable state and removing all the programs and opportunities that are available there, now this is absurd. There's no reason to do that. And, and you see, we know that when, in this combined system, budgets are gonna go over, construction's gonna be more expensive than you expect. Well, where is that cost going to be cut from? Is it gonna get caught, cut from the like police portion of the facility? No, we know that won't happen. Those overruns, the extra expenses are gonna get cut from the Rec Center portion of it. And why? Why? Let's just not even put it at that. Let's not have to choose that. Let's have a bake sale for the police instead. You know, there's just no need to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie Hammack, eight oh five East Second. I really appreciated that the person from Engage Winona came up earlier to remind you that you've already heard and engaged the community and how they feel about the rec. Just to quote the value statement from that report, "The East End Rec, by far the most mentioned, most favorited, with hundreds of comments loved by multiple generations." As an East End resident, as someone who takes my kids to the rec, I can safely attest that that sentiment stands, as you've heard over and over tonight. The East End Rec will not maintain the sense of safety for its users with a police station next door, as you've heard over and over tonight by the users of the rec. Furthermore, a three-story police-fire complex with a gun range does not belong in a neighborhood, any neighborhood. City council members repeatedly state they don't want to displace anyone. You don't have to. The Winona Police Department can stay where they belong, at the Law Enforcement Center. Renovations create more space at the LEC have been reported by the Winona Post to cost four million dollars. While there have been spitball estimates thrown out at what rent might cost after those renovations, there's been no public conversation from the city or county of what an actual agreement would look like. The city has already bought properties around Central Fire to expand at its current location, where renovations have again been reported by the Winona Post to cost two point three million. At six point three million in renovations, that's a quarter of the twenty-three to twenty-six million proposed for the giant police-fire complex that would be displacing many people in our community. This proposal is a clear example of the city prioritizing the wants of the police department to not be housed in the basement of the LEC over the needs of the community, needs which are met at places like the rec. It is a false argument that the WPD is having a hard time recruiting because of where they are housed and that a new police station would help with recruitment efforts. The WPD and every other police department in the nation are not having a hard time recruiting because they don't have shiny new stations. This false argument should no longer be used to muddy the water of this debate going forward. The community, and especially East Enders, do not like this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Larry Trupto Bowman, seven nineteen Graham Street. You don't have to grow up or live in any particular community to understand the significance of local gathering spaces that bring people together for common good. And I don't have to have kids to understand the importance of East End Rec to the surrounding community and Winona at large. It's a building that many people care very deeply about, including myself, as I was fortunate to receive my COVID vaccinations there. I want to take a moment to acknowledge that multiple people would have been here tonight, but they had a rehearsal for the Great River Shakespeare Festival for a collective performance that shares their stories, including the positive impact of places like the rec. Please reflect on that for a moment. Even one of the city's integral and longstanding summer festivals is worried about the community and the future of East End Rec and investing time and resources into that space to preserve its place in our community. One of those participants is coordinating new art at East End Rec, artwork that will cease to exist if this plan continues forward. I am dumbfounded how far, how far this plan has progressed without timely respect to critical community feedback. An entire complex has been conceptually designed, thousands of dollars invested for a plan that the community largely rejects, as you've seen tonight. Look at this room today. People are pleading to leave, pleading to leave the East End Rec alone. This plan and tenacity of its architects are short-sighted. It just really seems that all critical thought and logic has been thrown out the window. I serve on the Human Rights Commission and just last year, a sitting county, city council member said that we had lost our way. And we, when we asked the city council to pass a resolution in opposition to the incarceration of children, they said that it wasn't something for the city council to influence. Every member of city council rejected that request except for council member Eileen Muller. Every member. And think about this plan. Seems like you've made priorities clear to maintain surveillance over children. So is this really a plan you want to move forward with, or is this possibly that you have also lost your way?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Hebel Garcia. I'm a eleven twenty-four married. I am a mother of two teenagers. We moved here two years ago in the middle of twenty twenty, June of twenty twenty. When my kids started school, they started at home. Hanging out at the rec was one of the first ways that they got to meet and interact with some of the other kids in the community. It's so important for their growth and development. I myself have dedicated my careers to children through social work and later in nursing. And I can't tell you enough about, you've already heard all the reasons about why it's so important. One of the buzzwords that is going around in healthcare is trauma-informed care. I highly suggest that you make a trauma-informed decision. The evidence is here, the people have spoken. And it's essential to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Knox, the next, and I live at one fifty six East Sixth Street. I'm also a member of the city's Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee on Transformative Projects. At the suggestion of the city planner, some of my fellow subcommittee members have actually entertained the notion that this plan should be considered as a transformative project. Now, I'm fairly certain that most, probably all of you will not be elected officials in Winona in twenty years, the scope of the Comprehensive Plan. Whether or not you are, what you decide in the coming months will create the future of Winona for the coming decades. I want to clearly and definitively say on the record that this project is not a transformative project, at least not in any positive sense. It is a degenerative project. If you vote for this plan today or any day in the near future, your legacy for the next twenty or fifty years will undoubtedly be an inheritance of harm to the community. At the May sixteenth city council meeting, Mayor Sherman, you said, quote, "This is an expensive project, potentially the largest project in the history of the city of Winona." I think it's extremely important that everyone understand that as we're going through this process, these are the cards we've been dealt. We are the ones who are here now and we are the ones who have to make this decision, end quote. With all due respect to the mayor and the council, those assumptions are fundamentally wrong. There are always public buildings and public services that could be improved in the community. There is no urgency to this project and you have not been dealt any cards. If you're not happy with the cards, make new ones. There is no inevitability that these projects even happen and most certainly there is no legitimate reason why these three very different projects have been lumped together. When this plan was, plan was first proposed, the Rec Center was simply going to be destroyed. And then by the next meeting, the entire project had been renamed from a combined police-fire station to a community center slash public safety building. The best choice you could make today would be to mentally and practically separate these three projects permanently. While I'm skeptical that a new community center will ever be built after the East End Rec Center is demolished, even if you do build it, you will still be destroying the neighborhood in countless other ways that have been mentioned today. Removing green space and community gardens, these are places that people have congregated for generations. You'll be dropping the two loudest public buildings in the city into a residential neighborhood, degrading the basic day-to-day life of residents in the area. Finally, the fact, as it's been mentioned once, that you've even considered placing a grotesque police building across the street from one of the most amazing architectural sites in the state of Minnesota is frankly disgusting. While the religious colonization of indigenous land was disgusting as well, the Saint Stan's Basilica is a testament to Jesus's love and his message of forgiveness and his support of the poor and marginalized in society. Across the street, you will be placing a building that stands for the criminalization of humanity. A building that will help police methodically target the poor. Across from a site of God's love, you will build a gun range in which city employees practice killing city residents. It is sacrilegious and gross. So I ask you to separate these three projects. Deal yourself a new set of cards.
Thank you.
Thank you, council, for listening to all of us. I'm Doug Nopar, two nine four four zero, County Road seventeen. We started this meeting with the pledge of allegiance. We started this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance that ends with liberty and justice for all. That's what we are. That's what we need you to be. It's time to explore some pretty serious options. Instead of relying on what I heard from a number of you in phone conversations over the last couple of months, which was, this is our only option. How about vacant properties in the East End Industrial District, where you wouldn't be disrupting residential neighborhood? How about one of those big parking lots downtown? How about land on Second Street, west of Huff? How about sitting back down with the county whose staff and county board members are really willing to have conversation and accommodate you, both physically and financially, and save taxpayers a lot of money? I ask you, what do you think about the funding structure of this project? Sounds feasible, with such a big chunk relying on state bonding. In twenty twenty-two this year, as you know, the legislature did not pass a bonding bill. What makes you think there will be a bonding bill passed in twenty twenty-four? When you got a hundred and fifty people calling our legislators saying, "Don't fund this", and not just our legislators, legislators in the rest of the state? You know, as white people, it's kind of our job now to recognize what's happened to black and brown people in our country, often at the hands of police. And we can debate whether that's happening here in Winona or not, but that is in the minds of our family members and friends, where our people have called them. And we need to recognize that that, this idea of a police station and a recreation center next to each other is not a good idea. So I ask you to dream big, and not just dream for police and fire, but dream big for youth, dream big for the community, dream big for seniors. Shree Hale's proposal of an expanded recreational space in that neighborhood sounds wonderful. We can do all this. Dream big, and then we can all get behind it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I guess my first words to say
Name and address, please.
is wow. My name is Linda Williams, six twenty-nine Lafayette, Winona. I came here tonight in support of the East End to give my support of a public safety building. I didn't come here to listen to people bash the police department. I sat down here, the first word the woman said behind me was, "I almost called the police last night." We call the police when it's convenient for us, when we need them. And this is how we treat our police department. We're human beings. I was not going to bring this up. I was a dare officer. I was a police officer here in Winona for fifteen years. I sat at lunch tables with these kids. I played basketball with them. They respected me, and I respected them regardless of the color of their skin. And to have people come here today with cop block, it's not a cop block. There's firemen there too, and the words that I heard from these citizens today, you know, I were getting one, two, three applicants for police department? I can tell you. All you have to do is listen to this room. But anyway, I'm in a minority here, but at least I'm with a good minority with Margaret Shaw Johnson, retired judge for Winona County, so I will be in that company. I'm here to voice my support for a new public safety building and community center. I'm a lifelong Winona resident, and I grew up in the East End of Winona, about as far as you can go east. And we were not rich by any means. We lived on food stamps. My mother worked two jobs, volunteered at Saint Stan's where I went to school. And I turned out pretty darn good. But I am appalled with what's going on in our community, in our world today, where police are hated the way they're hated. I attended Saint Stan's grade school, and I have been a lifelong member of Saint Stan's Church. And I've witnessed firsthand Father Meyer patrol down at the East End Rec Center because of all the violence and things that went on. The East End Rec Center is not all positives. I understand that it's a safe place for kids to go. It wasn't always like that. I spent many years at the East Rec, the old East Rec, playing ice skating and just hanging out there. The old East End Rec has since been rebuilt, and it is now our new East End Rec. As with the old rec center being replaced with a new rec center and community saw a need for the new facility, and that's what brings us here together tonight. And as history repeats itself, we are once again looking for a new facility that will serve the entire community. And part of our community is the police department, regardless if you want them or not. And as we're doing the Pledge of Allegiance, a comment is also made behind me about taking a knee. I'm just wow. I am just, I wish I hadn't come here tonight. But this facility provides three needs for the community: fire, police, and a community center, which serves our entire community, from youth to older adults. I have a senior citizen mother who lives down in the East End who will utilize that. And she's at church more often than she is anywhere else. So yeah, she can just walk from church to the community center. This site was selected based on the needs of the Winona Fire Department, not the Winona Police Department. And as Fire Chief Biddle has stated time and time again, it's location, 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 and I know if you are not in law enforcement or fire department, you don't understand what location, location means. This site is for the greater good and will serve over thirty thousand people, not just a small number.
Linda, we hit time.
The police department has been renting from the Winona County for several years, and they have outgrown their space for the twenty-first century policing needs. A friend once asked me
Everybody chill out. In order, okay? Linda, I'll ask you to be done, please.
Yes. Who did the cops call when they need help?
Order, everybody chill. Seriously, I let Bursari go long, okay? Trying to be fair here. Understood. Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Will Sturtevant. I am at six thirty East Franklin. I am based in North Carolina, but I've spent my past four summers living, paying taxes, and indeed, bringing tourists to the city of Winona as a performing artist at the Great River Shakespeare Festival, and I was able to make it tonight. I wrote my words down because speaking publicly in an open forum such as this fills me with anxiety. It's a confusing experience. My hands sweat, my voice and breath seem to be out of sync. Trembling occurs if I try to hold anything. I wrote my words down because this anxiety is all-consuming and in writing with respect to the previous speaker. I realize this feeling directly correlates to the same experience I feel when in the presence of police. I am a thirty-nine-year-old black man from the South who has traveled the country performing Shakespeare forty-eight states thus far. And everywhere I go, this fear, this feeling, this anxious trembling and sweating and confusion follows me when law enforcement steps into my sphere or drives behind my vehicle or passes by my walking path. This feeling is endemic to communities of color and BIPOC folk at large. I'm not special, and that is simultaneously a comforting and horrifying reality to know. I began to think, what could I say that hasn't been said? I thought I'm an outsider who only spends the summers in Winona. But then I like to think I helped strengthen communities everywhere I go by bringing my artistry and presence into their lives. I thought I could talk about the studies that show the toll police centers take on the mental health of communities, specifically communities that are resistant to such construction. I thought what it could, what it would be like if I could sit outside Blooming Grounds with a latte with you all and discuss the loss of life, accidental or otherwise, of young black men and women in the name of law enforcement? I thought of Tamile Rice and Michael Brown. I thought, what if I shared a story of a cousin's murder? Or the anguish of accidental enforcement? Or the bullet hole that not only pierced one heart, but left holes in so many others as well, mothers and fathers, brothers and cousins? Then I realized, well, money is looking like it's allocated. Plans are looking like they're mapped. The blueprints look like they're laid out. The protesting community seems to be ignored. And what is left for me to say, other than this decision, is seen by all voters. Its impact will be lasting for all residents, and all future incidents that occur on this communal land will be laid at the feet of all who voted to execute this construction. I hope suggestions are heard and community is protected, not by agents of enforcement, but by allocated money for social healing and development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, good evening. Good evening. Katoalansagari is my name, fifty-one twenty with seven. I've been in this community almost fifteen, seventeen years now. And I didn't believe when I heard about this proposal, just because it has a very beautiful title, Public Safety. And I was confused because I wasn't aware that this is what is going to happen. You've changed the name, and here's where we are. However, I see a lot of, you've heard the voices here, they're pretty, yeah, there's a lot of resentment in that proposal. And as much as we all would love to see a community where we feel safe, and for me, being here fifteen-plus years, I frequented the rec center. I still do go out there. I admire everything that is going on that is helping the community feel safe. I see parents drop off, cross and shift between the next parent. They can leave the kid for an hour. It's a good space for community building. I think we have an opportunity here, not just to bring, to talk about it, but also, we had a, yeah, not-so-young lady here talk about the Friendship Center and not having a space for them to do that. When I, first thing I noticed about these communities, we have a growing senior citizen space. That's why we have all their nice buildings they have for them to leave at. But also, we have, they are also taking off the load from the parents who cannot either afford or don't have the time to take care of the younger generation that we have. And I see this as just a great opportunity for the community to merge these two groups of people where they have values, which we kind of, some of us forgot, either getting trapped in our own lifestyles trying to make ends meet. But this is an opportunity for grandma, grandpa to hang out with grandkids, show them the ways, teaches the history. That was about how the Polish community came out here. I love history personally, and I grew up in Africa, Kenya, but coming out here, I noticed there's a very good resemblance in the way the older and the younger generation have an opportunity to work together and also grow. They had a small little program up in, I think with seniors and Winona State students because of housing costs, they had the young students, I think it's still going on, where they can hang out with some of the senior citizens who, I mean, it gets a little boring, you know, hanging around in the houses. But I thought this was a great opportunity to have two generations merging together and having, rather than having a situation where we have a difficulty with with the relationships, because we're not there. We can, we're not there. We're not in a position where we say law enforcement and the public, especially living in that particular area in town, have a comfortable liaison. We've had it from people of color, like that, people from, whether you're European ancestry. There's that sense of discomfort that you feel when you have this very important public service right next door in your residential neighborhood. Why, so for me, I think it's important to see that, to hear the voices of the people. Somebody asks, "Did you talk to us? Did you say something?" This is the first time I heard it, about three weeks ago. Maybe I've been oblivious with the news, but I think it's important for you to sit back and think about it and say, "Hey, what do the people want?" And from now, I think it's evident and clear enough to see that our community does love this generation spot for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Athena Hesh, and I live
How about just the street? You know what street?
One, one fifty-six East Fifth Street, and I'm eight years old. I am very tall for my age, and I brought this sign. I had it for a long time, but I know it. I knew it was important, so I, I just thought to bring it.
What is it?
It says Community Not Cages.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Lydia Boyson, nine two eight East Broadway Street. On July twenty-third, nineteen eighty-six, every seat in the gallery of the Winona City Council chambers was occupied. The largest group was there to stop the demolition of the East End Recreation Center. Joseph Jurezak of one sixty-nine Zombrel Street told the council that the East Side Neighborhood Association and the citizens of the East Side do not want the center demolished until a plan to replace the building with a new one is ready. As he presented a petition with over eight hundred signatures supporting that view, the gallery broke into wild applause. And these excerpts were pulled from the archives of the Winona Daily News. While these specifics differ from our current situation, one thing echoes clearly across the ages. The East Recreation Center is an irreplaceable anchor to the community and worth fighting for. This was true in nineteen eighty-six, and it remains true thirty-six years later. I realize the city doesn't intend to displace East Rec users, but rather hopes to acquire the school across the street to build a new community center. However, it strikes me as something that is happening to the neighborhood instead of for it. The opportunity to move across the street is not what the community is asking for. And there are many citizens who have expressed this idea via letters to the editor, emails, calls to their council people, Community Not Cages, leading public gatherings, and here before council tonight. I'm asking you specifically to maintain the East Rec block as a space dedicated to play, to consider a modest but adequate Combined Safety Services building at the current fire station location, similar to this site feasibility option two A. Build up, build down, do what you need to do to allow the East Rec to function as an anchor for the community and play a continued role in the safety and livability of Winona. I conclude by sharing excerpts of a letter to the editor penned by Marcia Bamanic on July seventeenth, nineteen eighty-six. "It makes no sense at all to force citizens to fight for something that should have never been decided upon without their input before the fact." Let us take a look at history. The East End Recreation Center has served many generations of Eastsiders. Thousands of adults and children can fondly remember the classes taught there, the recreation events, the playground fun, and the ice skating. I agree that the building has many needs. It is in a state of neglect and disrepair. This letter is dedicated to M.J. Bamanic, Vern Smelzer, Elmer Gabrick, Walt Palublicky, Aggie Kern, and the countless others who dedicated their lives that all people in the city of Winona would have their recreation needs met. Make your voice heard so their hard work and tireless efforts would not be in vain. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerome Christensen, six twenty-eight West Fourth. At the beginning of this meeting, a young man stood up here and asked the question, "What parent would be proud for his kid to be best friends with a cop?" I'm that parent. And I'm that grandparent too. Over the past fifty years, I've had the pleasure and privilege of getting to know and work with and be friends with members of our police department and with our fire department. Just a reminder that when things go south, we call the cops. When things get really shitty, we call the cops. When the house catches on fire, we call the fire department. When somebody's about to die, we rely on the fire department. Emergency services are the primary responsibility of municipal government. Primary responsibility. And I have some experience with that. People scoffed when Linda pointed out that location, location, location. People scoffed when Linda pointed out that location, location, location. Well, response time might not mean a lot when you're taking your kid to a basketball game. But response time, when you're dealing with fire, when you're dealing with medical emergency, is a matter of life and death. And I have plenty of personal experience, too much. Nineteen ninety, my house caught fire late at night. The next day, the fire marshal told me that my family had a matter of two, maybe two and a half minutes of life in that building. Tell me response time is not important, that a minute, two minutes, three minutes doesn't make a difference. Two thousand twelve, my dad had a heart attack. It depended on, had there, had there not been an emergency s- response, emergency defi- defibrillator, he would have died. There was. In time, he lived. Let's not discount this. I hear, I've heard a lot, and it's very clear that this community values recreation and it values our children. And any plan to deal with public safety also has to include those, those, those things. But I remind everyone that essentially, the East End Rec is a building. It's bricks, concrete, glass, and sheet metal. It can be replaced. It can be replaced somewhere else. What goes on there is irreplaceable. But it's a thing of people, not of a building. And if the people are there, if the parents are there, if the counselors, the members are still there, we can do that anywhere.
Time.
But dispatching emergency vehicles is a different matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jessica Clark. Um, I own a home on nine-one-seven East Fourth Street. Um, for those of you who live in different parts of town, that is very, very close to the East End Rec Center, um, which is four blocks away from the fire department. Um, I grew up in a small town, in a very conservative area, in a pretty conservative family, and I am not that. I have conservative friends. We disagree on things. I have friends who are cops who also serve in Winona PD and in other locations. We have talked about how they are trying to do good for their community, and I trust them. I know they're good people. But they also know that it's kind of a toxic environment even for them. They try to stand up. Some things don't go their way. Keep your head down. Military family, same thing. Sometimes the call is made and it is not answered. Depends on who you are. I was very confused as to why we needed to bring police closer to the East End when it's already been pointed out that it's about seven miles long. So it seemed like if we needed to reach the community faster, we should probably go west. That's not the issue. Um, everyone's pretty much said everything that I could think of. Um, but my last point that I would like to make is regarding the name switch. The Supreme Court, this is not my opinion, the Supreme Court has ruled that the police are more property safety than people's safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Hello. My name's Laura Kavanaugh. I live at five-ten East Fifth Street. I'm new to this town by a couple of years. I spent most of my career as a social psychologist in Minneapolis. I worked for Amherst Wilder Foundation in studying some of the best practices involving criminal, uh, activity, uh, drug addiction, suicide, mental health, and so on. The best practices were of, were preventative practices, proactive practices. Policing is not necessarily proactive, but neither was therapy either. As a therapist, I was working in sort of a reactionary con- um, construct. Medical professionals and all this too. You get, you're dealing with the crisis, uh, after it's happened. What I would like to see more of is that we are less reactionary and more proactive. As a nation, as a, uh, society, it would be wonderful if we could put into practice preventative activities, preventative strategies that can actually help build the character of the human beings that live here on this planet and help them feel some value and el- ability to contribute to their communities. So that's all I have to say at this point, but the research is there. There is a plenty of valid research that says that you put your money into the prevention versus the reactionary methods that we tend to use now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Marilla Cunningham and I live at three-eighty-seven Dresser Drive. I just want to read something briefly. Whatever their age, all children have human rights, just as adults do. This includes the rights to speak, to express themselves, their opinions, as well as the rights to equality, health, education, a clean environment, a safe place to live, and protection from all kinds of harm. The letter and spirit, in my opinion, the letter and spirit of these statements are reflected in the recurring themes that I've heard tonight. The themes of what the East End Rec represents for people in the community. Safe space, community, inclusion, support, relationships. The statements are representative of the nineteen eighty-nine United Nations, of, of a document that was shared at the nineteen eighty-nine United Nations Convention on the Rights of the Child. So I just ask that you think about that, that you think about the statement, that you think about how it is reflected in many of the words that people have brought tonight and that you think about that as you make a decision on the East End Rec. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gregory Richard. I am, well, I live at four-sixty Hiawatha Boulevard. These aren't prepared remarks. I just wanted to take offense at the belief that we all hate police and that this is only our hatred with us not wanting police in this building. That's an easy excuse to not really look at the situation and understand why many in our community are not comfortable with police and what a police officer represents to them. Essentially, an individual who, at their discretion, can make your life hell and can really bring about some pain and suffering. So I just don't think the point here was for people who are against this building to bash police. I think it's more to understand what that represents and what that can bring. I think saying we all hate police is the easy way to avoid the actual situation, which is to really look deeply and figure out why there are these, uh, underlying distrusts of peace officers. So I just want to say we, we're not all police haters. And I don't think many in our group said that publicly. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Lori Crowsey and I live at seven-thirteen Main Street in Winona. My heart is just pounding. I am so humbled by the opportunity for people in our community to have their voices heard. I grew up in this town, moved back here after ten years and bought the house that I grew up in. My ninety-five-year-old mother, uh, we invited her to come and live with us at ninety-five. Uh, there are so many roots in this community. Um, and I wish I could just go through this, but it, what I've written doesn't even touch what is most important to me now. Um, I was so proud that the city council unanimously voted to spend three hundred and twenty thousand dollars to hire ISG to design a community center, creating the opportunity for longstanding, successful organizations, two of them, to share spaces, experiences, and programming in a building designed to meet their unique needs with ample outdoor green space and room to thrive in all the possibilities of intergenerational collaboration. Intergenerational programs intentionally unite the generations in ways that enrich participants' lives and help address vital social and community issues while building on the positive resources that both young and old have to offer each other and to their communities. After forty-two years in the Masonic Temple and several attempts to secure a new like location for the Friendship Center, you essentially made a two, a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar down payment on a community center. With a total number of adults, older adults, sixty-five plus, anticipated to double between two thousand ten and two thousand thirty, by then, more than one in five Minnesotans will be an older adult. Why not take this opportunity to create a new model for the future that taps into this amazing resource where we can connect with children and create an amazing model for the future? I implore you not to be distracted from your commitment to senior citizens. I implore you not to be distracted from your commitment to the high-quality youth programs at the ERC. I implore you not to be distracted by a police and fire station project that disrupts your commitment. I came from a white privileged family. Why aren't we considering the Huff Street Block for the safety project? Those citizens would not stand for it. They wouldn't accept the Quick Trip. We need to dig deep. This is important, important work, and let's take it on.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Katie Mueller-Fritag, two-six-seven-four-three, County Road fifteen. I've lived in Winona for forty-two years. I've used the rec almost that whole time. My parents owned a daycare on the east side of town when we were little. We all went to the daycare there together, utilizing all the programs, the ice skating rink, um, all the good things there. And I, when I was a teenager, I helped, uh, push council towards the skate park that got developed there. Um, as an adult, I helped move the farmer's market, winter market over into that building, um, which is still operating to this day. Coordinating lots of fundraisers there for them. And then when I became a licensed childcare provider, we utilized the rec a lot because we could walk our kids over there, use the free programming for them, and utilize the, um, free lunch programs that was going on then too. That was a really great space for me to meet other providers and for us all to let our kids run wild. So, and most recently, I attended Friends Fred Seminar on the bees and how to, um, split the honeybee hives and found that super interesting. Um, so I've used it my whole life. And I'm a member of Community Not Cages who has been working really hard to get this public hearing, get the notice out to the public so that we could pack the room tonight. Um, as you've heard from everybody here, most people here tonight, it's a very important space and it's breaking our hearts that you would even consider tearing it down. Um, but one thing I wanted to talk about that really hasn't been touched on too much is all the, um, community engagement sessions that have been happening. The one Marcy mentioned that happened a couple of years ago, the one going on now about the comprehensive plan and all this information you're trying to gather from the community. It is hard to take those serious when you do those things and disregard all the information. So the East End Neighborhood said, we love the rec. We don't want the rec tore down. Two years later, after that, that study comes out and everybody gave their input, here's a plan to tear it down. With a backup plan, oh, we'll move it across the street in what was going to be the parking lot. So it's just really hard to take council seriously at this point. And I see that you're still trying to gather information, um, from us and just be, just know that we're probably wary about giving more information. Also, response time from the fire department where it is, is perfect.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on the matter? Going to ask one more time.
Ted Hazelton, ten-seventy-three West Fifth Street, Winona. I'm going to go in a little bit of a dir- different direction. I appreciate the police department. I appreciate our fire department. I have friends that are both firemen and police officers. When I was a youngster and a rebel teenager, I had a cop from the city of Winona befriend me and introduce me to the East End Rec and the West End Rec. My interactions with the police have been positive. Same with the fire department. And I thank them to this day for helping straighten out my life when I was a troublemaker as a teenager. However, I don't agree with the location proposed in this, uh, option that's people are talking about. The city purchased a bunch of land around the existing fire station. Why can't the fire station be renovated and the police department relocated to that location? The East End Rec is a treasure to Winona. I grew up in the East End Rec and the West End Rec. It would be nice if the city could reopen the West Rec again instead of having it for a privileged few to go skateboarding. It's a public building. It's owned by the city. It should go back to the kids in the West End of Winona. We need the West End Rec back. We need the East End Rec. My, I grew up in them centers. My children go to them centers. And now I have five grandkids. When they're down from Calgary, Alberta, Canada, they want to go to the rec. They want to go to the swimming pool. We need to honor the requests of the community and do its best. Let's do some renovations. Forget forty million dollars. Do it for a, a, a fourth of that. That's all we're asking. We're not opposed to the police. We're not opposed to the fire department. I believe in the public safety of Winona, and that's one of the foremost duties as a city to provide services to our citizens, along with recreation. Let's stop this nonsense. Take a step back and reevaluate this. That's all we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? I'll ask one more time. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak regarding the public input on the community center, public safety building project? You did have your opportunity already.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, so I was here.
Make it quick.
I was here before. Everybody else got here. I listened to your guys' budget for next year. And you had in there something about the Anthem Skate Park. You also had something in there about a community garden space, where you were putting in money in the budget for next year for a community garden space. I'd like some transparency for everybody here, and I'd like to ask what that was all about. What, were you putting in the budget for next year or already planning to locate our community garden somewhere else?
This is a public hearing for public input. We are not here to answer your questions at this time. I'm more than happy to talk to you afterwards. How about that?
Sure.
Cool. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Let's do it. Hurry up, Eric. Come on.
Yeah, super briefly, just to address the response time issue. I, I really feel like if response time was truly critical to the members of City Council, they would have improved Broadway.
Is anybody else from the public wish to speak to this matter? Hearing no one, public hearing is now closed.
Mayor, may I say something?
Absolutely.
Oh, there is a motion. Oh, okay. May I make, okay. I'll make a motion that the council receive and file the written and oral comments.
Sir.
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a motion from Eileen, a second from Steve. Any discussion?
Mayor. So as you all have seen on the agenda, this, we don't have any other action other than to receive the comments that we got tonight. Further movements on any of these projects will be notified publicly ahead of time. I did, normally, I don't respond to specific public comments because that's not really what we're supposed to be doing right now. I, I did want to personally take accountability and apologize to anyone who did not receive an email response from me. In my time on council, I've been really proud that I respond to pretty much every single email that asks for a response, or I at least say, "Hey, I got your email." If I didn't respond, I didn't get it. And I'm really sorry for that and for not having checked in with city technology about why that happened. Unfortunately, we've tried to improve city technology, and that has resulted in lapses in communication. So I'm very sorry, and thank you to those who went the extra mile, who filled out the form and sent an email and called and showed up. That is so much work for you to do. So thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
George? I would just like to say thank you to everyone tonight, and we'll be moving forward from here. Thanks again.
Yep, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Totally.
We will now move on to the petitions, requests, and communications. If those leaving, could please do so quietly? We're moving on to the next item on the agenda.
For the remainder of this meeting, residents are only allowed to speak if they request, if they request before council, and I have recognized you to speak.
Item three point one is the reappointments to the Heritage Preservation Commission.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point two is reappointments to the Joint Airport Zoning Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Eileen, second from Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under unfinished business, item four point one is to ward the contract for the twenty twenty-two sidewalk project.
Make a motion to adopt the attached resolution awarding the contract to Fowler and Hammer, Inc.
Second that.
We have a motion from Eileen, a second from Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under new business, item five point one is the appointment of election judges for the twenty-two elections.
Move to approve those appointments.
Second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And item five point two are amendments to the liquor chapter of the Winona City Code.
A motion to introduce the ordinance.
I would second that.
We have a motion from Eileen, a second from George. Any discussion?
Can I get just a little bit of clarity on that? So we are, as I read this, I read through this, I understand we're conforming to, I think the legislature passed a new law, and so we're conforming our city code to this, this new possibility under Minnesota state law. If I got that kind of right?
Yes, specifically, it allows small brewers to sell products in any type of packaging. The current statute was only growlers, which are like a mini keg. And the new ordinance will allow them to sell in cans or bottles, off sale, on their premises. So if you went into this, into their premise, you could buy, I don't know if they're doing beer in cans or bottles, but it allows them to sell in that smaller packaging.
Okay, how many different businesses in Winona would that affect?
Currently, there's just one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
Start with Councilmember Wardzakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to agree with your statements on Joe Lepley. Very, very fine gentleman, and he's done a lot for both sister cities with Masato and also Bitu Poland. So I got to know him, and very, very good, and he takes it very, very seriously. Did a great job with that. And also, I already mentioned Hamilton Street Railroad Track Crossing. Thank you. Thank you, George. Councilmember Ayden.
Yes. Everyone that gets their water from the city's eight wells will be interested in the twenty twenty-one Water Quality Report, which came to me recently. It probably came to you also. It's, it's very well-written. I think it's very interesting, and it shows us that Winona's water is extremely clean, and it's being taken care of well. The, the water supply is under the EPA limit for lead, for copper, for nitrates, and for other contaminants. Only thing that it was registered above limits for was an old infraction from radium, and that was, that was several quarters ago. And that's been corrected. So meanwhile, thank you to the whole, the city water department and everybody that works on that. It's extremely important. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Councilmember Mueller.
Oh, my gosh, I have so many concerns, but I won't mention any tonight.
Councilmember Young.
It's like twenty minutes after my bedtime, so I'm going to pass.
Okay. Councilmember Rapinski.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to bring up a concern I've had a number of citizens ask me about, and it's the St. Charles Boat Landing. The downriver side of the peninsula, the St. Charles Boat Landing, is starting to cave in a little bit, making it difficult for people with larger boats to dock their boat. And I had the question numerous times if the city would be willing to put in a dock on the upper side of the peninsula on the St. Charles Boat Landing and not have it in the center, but maybe just put it to one side of it for smaller boats, flat bottoms, fishing boats, that the current isn't as big of an issue for them. And that, that question is brought to me a few times. So that's the only concern I have tonight, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Then moving on to the consent agenda. The approval of the minutes from June twentieth, the final adoption of an ordinance to remove the parking restrictions at the former Madison School Building, an ordinance to remove the parking restrictions at the former Central Elementary School, an ordinance to establish fifteen-minute parking on Mankato and Mark Street, and one claimed by the city of Winona.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Eileen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, the time being nine thirty. I move we adjourn.
I will second that.
And from Eileen, second from George. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meaning adjourned. Thank you, everyone.